All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate seeing everybody. May we have Roll Paul, please? Roll Call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Blum Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Vashaw.
Here.
All right. Let's see here. We're going to move on to invocation and inspiration. And today, we have the Director of Communications from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Mr. Dave Cunin. And we can follow that by a pledge of allegiance to the flag by Mr. Burns. I'm sure you would like to do that. Thank you very much. All right. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to be here at a council meeting. We're thankful for our council leaders and the time and effort they put into shepherd and lead the city and all those that support them throughout the departments and staff. We pray for a blessing that somehow we can weather through the pandemic, that those that are suffering emotionally, economically through this time can have the strength to carry on. And we pray as well that we can have racial harmony in this area continued with all the good nonprofits and churches that work together. We're grateful again for our leadership in this time to be together and to help move the city forward. And we pray a blessing to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you both. Mr. City Attorney, we have a report on any closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in the closed session.
Thank you. Any requests for modifying the agenda, anybody? Nothing? All right. Move on to item number one, ceremonial presentations. We have one for the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Is that right over there? Is Maria Kavanaugh in the building? Right there? Hi, Maria. This is one of those things that are very well, of course, deserved, and it's important to recognize, but it's also unfortunate we have to do so. All right? You're welcome, and thank you for coming, Maria. You're what?
I'm here for Marina.
Oh, you're Kathy. Okay. You're here for Marina. Gotcha. Forgive me. Sorry. I would like to welcome Kathy, Sexual Assault Director from Casa de Esperanza, to accept proclamation on behalf of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The crime of domestic violence violates the individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and abuse. It leaves an imprint of fear and hostility for the abuse in our community. The problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all society as a whole. Adults and children are victims of violence each year. In our quest to impose sanction on those who break the law by perpetuating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic violence and their children, who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. Now therefore be resolved that in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community through prevention, intervention, and education programs to eliminate domestic violence and become a violence-free community. That's dated today. Thank you very much. Have a picture. Be honest, did you smile?
I did.
All right. All right. All right. Thank you, Kathy, once again. All right. We have a little bit of a change here. Steve Powell, we're going to be welcoming Steve from...
Scott.
It's Scott?
Yes. So Mayor, if I may, I'd like to do a brief introduction for this economic development workshop.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay, it is Scott. So over the last few months, there's been a lot of discussion at the council level related to economic development. In July, Barry Broom, the president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, provided a presentation on the return on investment in Yuba City's membership with GSEC. Then also in July, Brenda Stranix with the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation came forward to present the comprehensive economic development strategy. There were further discussions related to economic development and the city's membership in GSEC in August and September. And it was at the August meeting that council requested that we coordinate an economic development workshop with the EDC and GSEC. And they were gracious enough to agree to come tonight to do that. And so I'd like to introduce Scott Powell, who's the Senior Vice President for GSEC, who will provide an overview of core functions, the role and services provided by GSEC. Also, I'd like to note that Danielle Casey, who has a little bit longer with GSEC, she'll be moving on, but she's here virtually with us. And then after Scott is done, Brenda will go up there and also provide a similar overview for the EDC. And Judy, if I may, could you please bring up the presentation for GSEC? And I'd like to introduce Scott Powell.
Welcome, Scott.
Forgot to hit the red button. Thank you, everybody. And to add further confusion, my first name is Michael, but I've got my Scott the entire life, so. But Scott, Steve, Michael, I'll respond to any of them. But, you know, so Mayor Harris, thank you, members of the council. Thank you very much for having Greater Sacramento Economic Council back out today. It's a pleasure to chat with you again. And Diana, thank you for all your support, and Brenda as well, preparing for this evening. So I'm going to take you through a bunch of slides. If you have any questions, I'm assuming the protocol is just to ask. But kind of an overview and agenda, but Diana's covered that. So my name, Michael Scott Powell. I am the Senior Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. So I lead our business development, our research teams, and as of next week, our marketing teams as well. I've done economic development for 15 years across the country. Majority of that time has actually been working at the city level. So very familiar with what economic development looks like at the local level, the regional level, and worked for the District of Columbia, which is kind of a weird amalgamation of city, county, and state all rolled into one. So I've done economic development all over the place and have a pretty good handle on it. Been in the region for about a year, and most before that, I was back in Wisconsin. So one thing I wanted to bring your attention to, and we did share this with Diana, is the National League of Cities put together a great document, something both my colleague Danielle Casey and I have shared with multiple elected officials, is this document's put together, like I said, by NLC along with IEDC, of outlining some of the kind of core functions of an elected official's role with an economic development. And you'll see multiple functions there on the slide. And as you're looking at it, you're thinking, the community college does some of that. Our public works does some of that. Community development does some of that. The Greater Sacramento Economic Council really focuses on that regional level, on the marketing and attraction, and then supporting some of the things like economic resiliency, strategic planning. And then we're rolling out business retention and expansion, which is visitation as well. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. When Brenda speaks to you, you'll see some of the other areas in which she functions. But the key is to look at that is it is a team sport. Everybody has a different role to make economic development function. It's not one group's responsibility, and pending on the different level or responsibility is how and which they all interface and work. So that'll be some of what we'll be talking about today. And if you decide to dwell into the 20 pages, it really is an easy read, of some of the things elected officials specifically, of what they can do to be a better champion of economic development. So I think nothing really shows how interconnected economies are than by looking at the workforce. I believe Barry presented this slide to you, so I'm not going to belabor the workforce part of the slide, but it's a great analogy of, you know, economies don't stop at municipal borders. They are interconnected among, from the local community to the county, to the region, to the state, and then to the, you know, to the federal government as a whole. So we are still constrained by, you know, the nature in which the country we live in and the fact that we're in the state of California, but there is still a great level of interconnectivity among the region. So one example, we were recently visiting with a community or a company down in Lincoln, you know, in Placer County, and checking some of their challenges, it was going well, it was not. And they never brought up workforce. So we asked them about it, and they said, we don't have any trouble recruiting workforce. But they said they get 20% to 30% of the workforce comes down from in and around the Yuba City area. So as those workers come down to Lincoln, they earn their paycheck, but when they return back to Yuba City, that paycheck comes with them and gets spent and circulated in the local economy. So a great example of how a regional economy works is that workforce interconnecting throughout the region. So as a company comes in, its workforce isn't located right next to them. It's shared throughout the region, and sometimes even a greater part is all. But again, if you can imagine that, if people, you know somebody that doesn't work in the community, works somewhere else, it's a great example of how those dollars and the economies interact with each other and contribute to an overall regional vitality. So some of the core functions that the Greater Sacramento Economic Council provides is lead generation and, you know, project response of, when a lead comes in, it usually comes in either at the state level or the regional level. Once they discern on a region, then they'll get down into the local level. So part of the work we do is we spend a lot of time developing lead sourcing of them, bringing them in to the area, outlining that value proposition, and, you know, providing that, you know, to the company so they can make an educated and informed decision and, you know, working with our community so they can put their best face forward once they hone in on the, you know, on the region. Also, have a very engaged PR marketing team. We spend a lot of time marketing and branding, you know, the region as well. We do all of that through the research. It's all data and evidence-based. It is, you know, when you're talking about companies making decisions, it is based upon data and evidence. What does the workforce look like? The tax structure, you know, the commute patterns, et cetera, whatever could impact, you know, the company in a positive or negative way. So again, we look at this at that regional level. GoBiz is a state representative that represents California as a whole. So when that comes in from GoBiz, they aggregate the entire state into one concise document. We do that for the region. So some of those, you know, kind of drilling down a little bit more in some of those roles we play in, so I kind of talked about that attraction, you know, response and coming up with new opportunities. We just rolled out a business retention and expansion program. We're just kicking it off now. And looking at visiting targeted tradable industry sectors, so companies that bring in wealth from outside the region in that grow the local economy and the regional economy as well. Talent is a major driver, I'm sure, from talking with businesses. Talented and educated workforce is what drives their location decision. So we're putting together right now a regional talent attraction program that we're finalizing now and hoping to roll out here in the next few weeks or months. Regional councils, we have a Food and Ag Council, a Fintech Council, a Life Science Industry Consortium. All those go to better inform our data and understanding of each of those so we can make a better value proposition for the region. And again, all of that is synthesized based upon the evidence from, you know, from all that so we can put together a, you know, a better informed value proposition. So some of the tools and resources that the Greater Sacramento Economic Council provides that you might or might not be aware of, and you can see all those, and, you know, this is with you, so if you want to refer back to them, but I'm going to highlight a few because nothing's worse than some dude standing up here reading you a slide. You know, so SizeUp is a great small business tool. GreaterSacramento.com/SizeUp provides, you know, market information, you know, where a market gap would be. So if somebody was looking at starting a coffee shop in Yuba City, it would provide them what is the demand? How much revenue could they make based upon industry trends and projections? So if a small business is looking at adding a line of service or starting, it's a great tool to see, is there a market for my product or service? Is available again on the Greater Sacramento website. A landing page, each of the 20 member communities from the Greater Sacramento region has a landing page. So as we market the Greater Sacramento region, is information about Yuba City on there that people get to see. Our sites database, so major commercial real estate sites throughout the region are on a queryable and searchable database. We have a staff member that updates that and works with our seven MOU partners in the brokerage community to make sure that's up to date. So when somebody's querying locations or site in the Greater Sacramento region, it's one more place where they can get more information on it. A job board, so businesses in the area have another avenue to post and reach a wider audience, more than just Indeed or, you know, the local area. We're pushing our marketing message out nationally, and they're getting that exposure as well. We have a dedicated PR team. They actually had Barry being interviewed with Bloomberg today. So, but they can also do is amplify the message that the community is putting out into our network as well to, you know, help get a better and more cohesive message for the region. And on top of that as well is we have extensive database sets. So oversee our research team. We spend a significant portion of our budget on research tools and actually have the staff behind it. So as you are starting to, whether you're doing land use planning or strategic planning sessions, your finance department's putting together their CAFR, we have resources that can help them provide strategic information that they might need for these documents. That is nothing more than a phone call away. So you can call myself, or Steve Powell, or Michael Powell, and we'll get you to the right person to get the information that you need. So, and then some of the areas in which to better leverage our relationship. So again, as we're submitting those responses as we get in requests, we submit out what we call an ETRAC or an RFI to all of our communities. What we're looking for is a letter of support and an available site of what makes your community special. We aggregate that, put in that regional spin, and, you know, put together a very consolidated package of information. We meet twice a month. So, you know, once, 30 minutes, that was last week. Next week, you got 90 minutes. So you get our business development update and, you know, a few other, you know, key pieces of information so you're aware of what's going on in the region and some of our efforts that we're doing. Our cooperation policy is nothing more than how and which we interact. And then we talked about those business retention efforts. So again, that's something we want to coordinate with the community. We've identified seven companies. Maybe there's more, maybe those are the wrong seven. That's that dialogue we want to have as we sit down and figure out, what can we do to help those businesses grow and succeed in the Yuba City area? So I'm going to close before I turn it over to Brenda, and I think I've done a pretty good job of keeping it 15 to 20-ish minutes. I had a mayor always tell me, and he attributed to Senator Mike Lee, although I did not fact check that, so he could have been just making it up, but he always said, what we do, we do together. And again, it was being economic development as a team sport of, we were always working, when I was working for a city, with our chamber, our community college, our regional partners to put together the best face forward and knowing that whenever a company lands in the region, we all benefit from the economic multiplier effect, and we grow stronger as a region. If one community suffers, then we all suffer. If we're not functioning well as a region, then there's no hope of one community being able to pull themselves out by themselves. So we need to all be successful together. We all need to work together. And, you know, and we look to you in that partnership to figure out how we can work together to grow that economy. So with that, you know, Mr. Mayor and Diane, that is my presentation for you for this evening. So I believe, are we holding questions to the end?
No, councils, welcome to ask any questions now.
Members of council, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I really enjoyed the graphics and design of it. Very nicely done. Can you go back to maybe a few slides? I have a question.
I hope I can. Tell me when to stop.
Keep going. Keep going. One more. Actually, forward, I'm sorry. One more. One more. Right there.
All right.
So...
Perfect.
One more. Backward, yeah, forward. Thank you. So I'm curious to know more about number four, regional talent and workforce efforts. Can you describe that a little bit more for me? Because as a council member, I get asked that a lot about the needs in our community.
So our focus, you know, our focus again is providing that regional value proposition of why somebody of traditional regional economic development was, we're going to get companies move into the region, recognizing that it's more of a competition now for workforce. So how do we start positioning the region to sell it to not only a company, but also to an individual? What is it going to look like for their workforce to relocate to the area? How do we encourage people by selling the amenities of the region to get them interested in wanting to move or relocate from wherever they are into the Greater Sacramento area? So we are building a talent-focused website, creating a job portal, and really targeting that message towards the individual rather than towards the company.
And my other question was on the committees that you mentioned, there's multiple committees that you have. So beyond our mayor representing or our city staff, who else from locally is on any of those committees from Yuba Sutter area?
So the Fintech Consortium and Life Science, when we're both started during the pandemic. So, and that's where we've looked to those, our regional partners, to help identify companies that want to participate. So I know for Food and Ag, we've reached out several times to a few local, you know, food companies to try to get them to engage, and haven't been successful. So if you've got some references, we would love to get them engaged. And because it's really an industry consortium to get that, you know, that input and feedback and have the ability for them to network with companies throughout the region.
Right. In particular, because of our ag industry being such a large revenue in this community and in that there's such a shortage of talent workforce. And so I find that it is important to have committee representatives beyond city council or mayor being at that table. It has to be some local business owners or trades or, you know, school nonprofits to help understand what are those needs in our area for the growth of economics. So I would really ask that as we move forward, I would be more than happy to try to connect with folks, but when people are in private business, they really want to be able to know that their time is going to be used with some, you know, meaning to that time. People are really busy, so they want to know, if I'm contributing to this time, what am I going to get in the contribution? Will they have to pay for membership, or would they come under our membership?
So those consortium, there is no fee to join. We do ask, to your point, that they are, you know, members of a business for the reasons you just mentioned, and they meet three to four times a year. So for an hour, 90 minutes at the most. So an opportunity during normal times to network. Now it's a little bit more of how do we share information, being it's a, you know, we've all been on enough Zoom calls to know it's two people can't talk. So to provide that, what's going on in that region. And so our Food and Ag is actually chaired by Mike Thiel of Rayleigh's, and this is a personal passion of his. And so it is very much industry-driven, but so if you have somebody, we would love to hear it. If you have companies that want to post jobs on our job board, we are just launching it now. You know, I think it's been live for a week, and we have not even promoted it yet. So those are two great opportunities that we would love, you know, love feedback and guidance from local businesses.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I love the fact that Rayleigh's is involved, and you have, they're more of a grocery, consumer buyers, farming industry, and that is very different than a grocery industry aspect of, you know, they're buying the products, not necessarily growing it or dealing with the water issues or other issues that local businesses in those particular businesses are having to deal with every day. So, okay, thank you for those answers.
Thank you for the question, Pam.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I've been one that's been very thirsty for knowledge on economic development. And I do understand regionalism. I operate a company that's in at least nine Northern California counties, so I understand the value of that. But I guess my question, and I'm not trying to shoot the messenger, is what have you done for me lately here in Yuba City as far as retention and/or recruitment?
Yeah. So the retention program of rolling that out regionally is something that we recognized was a missing piece of, you know, among the economic development community of having one, you know, one in place. So both myself and Danielle Casey, coming from other communities, of recognizing that it was a core piece but wasn't really being executed in the area, floated it among the Economic Development Director team. And one thing I'll note is, even though that's what we call it, there are several people there that aren't economic developers. There are many communities within the Greater Sacramento region that don't have an economic development partner. They have a city manager, a finance director, somebody from the planning department staffing them there. So want to make that distinction as well that I neglected to bring into the presentation. So as we're standing that up, that gives us a great level of business intelligence of what's going on regionally and what can we start doing, whether it's policy advocacy or working with workforce partners, or some other solution that we can actually put that data and evidence through those multiple interviews. So that's what's coming on the retention side. Again, a strong functioning, you know, regional economy is what's in it for you. If, you know, again, if the jobs aren't, going back to the example of a company in Lincoln, if that company isn't growing or expanding and people are working there and that money coming back to the economy, it, you know, it harms the overall regional economy. So while you can look at, I'm looking for, hey, here are the, you know, the companies we brought to the area, recognizing that companies that come into the region benefit the workforce in the area, that workforce brings back, you know, income spending, the suppliers in the area are, you know, supplying those companies as well. So it grows the overall economy. Absent that, what's in it for you is if none of that does happen, the economy isn't as vibrant as it is. And again, we're constantly focusing on, how do we become more competitive? This region is still very focused on, you know, government. It needs greater levels of diversification. So how do we grow those tradable sectors, and how do we diversify that economy so it continues to grow? In 2001, the Greater Sacramento region was one of the fastest economies to recover after the recession. In 2008, we were one of the slowest. And that is true of almost every, you know, community. And actually looking at it, Yuba City of, Yuba City and the Yuba Sutter area was even slower to recover than, you know, as the two counties and the city. So by creating that regional diverse economy ensures that through this recession and future ones, that they'll be more resilient to come out of them, but will also enjoy a greater economy when the economy's going well.
A follow-up question, and I don't want to get into partisanship, but I think it's been well documented that California is not a friendly place to do business. What's GSEC's strategy to combat that in the region?
Well, first, I didn't notice. But so, and it's, and one of those too is, you know, is working with our partners. So when we address policy issues, we had a very in-depth conversation with the Bay Area Council and the East Bay Partnership and some of those other regional economic development and business groups of what can we do to, you know, better position California? Not so much position, but what are those things that are impeding the ability in which to grow businesses and succeed? We interviewed, you know, about 10, 12 site selectors across the nation right before the pandemic, and their feedback to us is California's reputation is getting worse, is, and it's not just anecdotal of between regulation and, it wasn't even taxes, it was regulation, and furthermore, the unpredictability of there's always something new coming down the pike that they can't prepare for. I've talked to several business people throughout the country. Most of them will tell me, if I've got to pay a little bit more tax, I'm not happy about it, but I can live with it, but I need to know the working environment. And if I don't know that, I can't plan. When I was in Michigan, they repealed the business tax with no plan to replace it. So I had businesses telling me, they're like, I can't forecast my revenue because I have no idea what my tax liability is going to be in three years, because the legislature repealed it in one session and passed it. So what are we doing to address that is we are working with the economic development community across the state through the Real Coalition and others to put forth practical recommendations to allow us to better compete. Because let's be clear, the solution... Because let's be clear, the solution to this recession for probably 20 other states are California-based companies. And if we aren't deliberate in protecting those resources, we as California taxpayers, you know, invested in the infrastructure, whether it's the universities or other research institutions that allowed them to grow and flourish, and they're moving that, you know, that knowledge and capital out. So it is something that if Barry was here, if you think this is long-winded, you'd get at least 10 more minutes of why we need as a state to be coming up with a competitive program of what are the programs that we need to be doing and things we need to fix to better, better position to, you know, grow California? Because California is one of the few states that hasn't put out a recovery plan as of yet unless it, unless I missed it, I haven't seen it yet. And that puts us at a significant competitive disadvantage, both for the businesses in the community and for those that, looking for that opportunity to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Again, thanks for all three of you being here tonight. I really appreciate it and giving the presentation. That would be, what was that, Scott, Steve, and Mike?
Exactly.
You know, echoing the Vice Mayor's sentiments, I mean, the biggest problem that we have in California statewide is bureaucracy and regulations. It's, it's not business-friendly. And I'm looking at a golden opportunity that's right here in front of us, and I want to understand how this translates from GSEC, EDC, to the city of Yuba City to help us grow. Our two strongest assets we have here, it's been documented time and time again, is ag industry and healthcare. That's our greatest assets right here in Yuba City and Center County. And we take that and with the pandemic that's been going on, you see a lot of people that are leaving the metropolitan areas and moving to the rural areas because they found out that they can work from anywhere. So one of your points you, you mentioned was lead generation. How does a lead generation from GSEC translate into us getting a, a new business partner in our community? Because our community, while we need to preserve the ag land around us, we have a lot of area within our city limits that could be developed. We have a great opportunity, especially in the ag industry, for industrial side, for R and D, for, you know, development of tractor implements, things of that nature, seed development, healthcare, you could do the same type of thing with R and D. How do you, when you're putting together something at GSEC, get those lead generations and sell us as Yuba City versus a Lincoln or a West SAC or a Sacramento to get people to want to come and talk to us? Because it's one thing to get a lead generation, but we got to have the follow-through. So that's kind of my first avenue going down. How does that lead generation get to a new business here?
So that's, you know, you know, Mr. Shaw, that's a great question. And part of that is, is that, that local level. So of having that, as we bring them in, you know, I used to, when I worked for a city, I used to love to remind my regional partner was, it's like, you know, I'm the fullback taking it in that last yard of, it was the regional partner to get it, you know, get it into the red zone, it was the local one to kind of finish it off. So the regional was still there to provide me data, evidence, you know, information, but it was me at the local level to help them go through the, you know, the entitlement process, to prove that they could meet their timelines, to prove that the infrastructure was in place, to prove that any other, you know, local challenges could be addressed and there wouldn't be a challenges, but there'd be opportunity and that, you know, that company would be successful in the region. So when we put out those RFIs, we look for our communities to respond back and say, here's what, what makes our community special and why this opportunity is right for our community. So we can highlight that in our engagement because when we talk with them, we like to say of, here's what these three or four communities will do for you as an opportunity. So absent that, we still sell the region and, you know, look at what's best and how we can find the right spot for them. But needing that feedback from you as that team of, we do part of it, but we also need you at that table for that back and forth to help us identify that last mile opportunity of what are some of those things of servicing 20 communities? We try really hard to know everything we can about each community, but as you can imagine, you know, there's a lot of things you miss as, you know. So that's where we need that partnership and need that kind of point of contact to be that resource for us to call up and say, Scott, this, this is an amazing opportunity and this is why Yuba City is the perfect spot for this company.
So hearing you say that, that, that leads me to believe we've kind of been missing that as a city for quite some time, that you have the ability to have lead generation, but there's an element that we've been missing here. This isn't something new because we haven't seen that growth over the past, you know, eight to 10 years. We're, we're needing that point person, as you said, in-house, correct?
That is correct.
And we currently, and we currently do not have, nor have we had, that in-house person. We've kind of been filling the void the best we can, but that's, you're telling me that's what's going to make the, the best difference?
And somebody that is focused on and looking at, you know, at a local level, there are different challenges of, does a site have infrastructure or is the planning right? Stuff along those lines are really great ways that local, that local person or the community, and again, it's a, a community decision of how and which you want to engage. But absolutely, you need that, you know, you need that person that's going to best position your assets in region, you know, your assets to grow the local economy. So, and that's really where that local piece comes in.
Okay. And, and this is, not meaning to be any way combative, I'm trying to understand this whole thing because I want economic development to work in our community because it has been lacking for some time and we really want to see us flourish here. But you talk about the Yuba City landing page. So obviously if you have a lead generation, they're looking at things, where's all the information that you're just talking about that you need that other input coming from? Have you been getting that from our city to help understand our economy, to understand the infrastructure we have so that when they look at, you know, what we have to offer, they're looking at a true picture? Or is, is that another element that's missing as well that we would need this person to fill in and, and be that bridge?
That would be, it's, so we, you know, in normal times, we came out and toured the community, I was, you know, I want to say October, November is what sounds about right. So we brought out probably about nine of our staff and spent about three hours touring the community to get a better understanding of, you know, of Yuba City. And we try to do that twice a year, whether it's myself, Barry, and members of the team, you know, so we understand of, again, trying to understand each member that, the community. But when it becomes down to a specific site that we're submitting this RFI, you know, we're looking for feedback or input from the community, you know, with a seven-day turnaround, that's when we look to our local partners to provide that, those last pieces of information. So that landing page was information either we put up and sent over to the community to say, is this accurate and correct? What else needs to be added? And if we don't hear anything, we make our best guess. So, and again, it's part of that partnership as well of, we need that individual that has that understanding. And again, it doesn't have to be a dedicated, full-time person, but somebody that has that dialogue, that's advocating for the community and helping, helping us understand along with our 19 other partners as well.
Okay. And, and I really appreciate that. I get the regionalism, I mean, I live in Yuba City, I go to church in Roseville. And so I have a lot of friends down there and such as well, and I see what their community's doing. I'm just wanting this partnership to work. And I understand GSEC's got a role, EDC has a role, and we have a role as a city. And we've got to get all three of these plugged in together. Because what's going to attract businesses here isn't just going to be the data, but it's going to be the relationships. And you're going to open the door for some of those that we don't have access to. And we need to make sure that we have all the key components from EDC to the city that can step through that door and bring them to our community if they're a perfect fit. That's really, I think, what all five of us up here are seeking is the understanding of how we get them here. Mr. Shaw, I couldn't have said it better myself. So, thank you.
I think that's another task for the lead person to, to coordinate that, put together some type of policy. And my question's initially been answered. The one thing I have remaining, Steve, Scott, Mike, is have you, have you seen any opportunities through GSEC or otherwise for the, what we are anticipating to be a resurgence in telecommuting?
We've, you know, anecdotally, we're seeing a lot of that evidence now. The in-migration from the Bay Area, Redfin just, you know, tracks real estate data and has the greater Sacramento region as the number one in migration. LinkedIn has us number three. So it's really tough to get good data during the pandemic, but I'm not going to question Redfin or LinkedIn. I think those are great, great examples of people coming from outside this region of choosing to be here when they can choose to be anywhere. And we don't know what's going to fully happen, especially in the office environment. I can read one report that people are going to be working from home forever, and I'll read another that says people can't wait to get back into the office. I think the truth is, we don't know, and it's probably some combination of them. But I, I think we all know there's going to be some level of tele, teleworking for those in office environments where that type of work, you know, is suitable and reasonable. And we fully expect that, and that is part of, part of our, you know, value proposition and talent attraction efforts of, you've got a lot of opportunity to live a great lifestyle, and if you still have to be in the Bay for one or two days a week or a month, it's a 90-minute, two-hour drive or train ride. So why not leverage a much greater quality of life and sell that proximity to your, you know, your tech employer or whatever employer it is?
Exactly what I was thinking. So that's good. Thank you for that. And forgive me, man, did you have some?
Okay.
So I'm going to follow the other council's lead. Thank you, Steve, Michael, and Scott for the presentation and everything that you folks do. I just got one quick question. So you folks came here, did a tour of the community, got your thoughts and stuff, and then sent it to the city with what you think our city is and what you would like to show throughout the region. Did we answer you? Did we say it was good? Did we, the main thing, did we answer you?
I'll be honest, you know, Mr. Cardoza, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I know there were several that we did on the fly to make sure we had something, and it's, it's a living document. We can update those 14 times a month. Our marketing team won't be happy, but we'll be happy to update it 14 times a month if that's what's necessary. So, you know, it's, you know, like I said, very easy for us to do, very easy to, of all those resources we offer, we put them there to support our communities and to grow the economy. We don't do it for our own adulation, and we think they're great resources. So, you know, and we look forward, I mean, running the research department of, I would say there's probably seven or eight communities, you know, that, you know, that probably have a research request in once a month, and there's another 10 to 12, we rarely get one. I'll be honest, I think I've done at least two for you this year, Brenda, in the past two or three months. So, yeah. So done, you know, I'm trying to remember, but we've had quite a few, and we're hap, we're excited to do them. Those are the fun ones. You know, pulling, you know, pulling another piece of data for Barry, we're happy to say, sorry Barry, I've got Yuba City asking for something. We'll get to you tomorrow.
All right. Well, thank you, Scott, for everything that you and GSEC does, and looking forward to working with you and GSEC in the real near future. So, thank you.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mayor, members of council, again, thank you very much for the opportunity and the partnership and the continued partnership. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it, too.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Brenda, Yuba-Sutter Economic Development Corporation. Good to see you.
Good evening, council. I think we, we had breakfast together this morning, right?
Yes, we did.
Without, without any food, unfortunately, but.
When I can get my phone to work, that is.
That's right. So you all know me, I am Brenda Stranix, President Chief Operating Officer for the Yuba-Sutter Economic Development Corporation. By way of background, I was born and raised here. I raised my kids here, I'm raising my grandkids here, and my great-grandkids are here as well. So nobody loves this community more than me. I know that many of you share that love, but nobody loves it more than me. Being a child of six, a family of six kids, I was seldom called Brenda. It was probably more, hey, you, or one of my other siblings' names. So I share Scott's appreciation for multiple names. So Yuba-Sutter Economic Development Corporation is a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization formed by the local six jurisdictions back in 1994. In 1996, we became an economic development district. And I know some of you have heard this before, but just by way of background and for some, some precedence, governed by a board of directors, and my board president or chair happens to be in the room, Margaret Fernandez. So I appreciate her being here as well this evening. We're a very small staff, staff of four. We used to have about 12 employees. We're much leaner and about, oh, 400 times more efficient than we were once upon a time. And of course, you know that we provide regional economic development to the two counties, Yuba and Sutter Counties and the city within. So business creation and retraction, attraction is something that we, one of the four main pillars that we perform. It's probably our most challenging, we've talked about this before, the lack of infrastructure to support these RFIs that we get out of GSEC is very difficult for us to respond to. When a business is seeking a million square foot under roof, we don't have it here. If they're seeking 500 acres, it's certainly not going to happen in the city of Yuba City. But we try to be as responsive to those RFIs when we can on a regional basis. Business expansion and retention, that is our, I, I believe that's our, our shining star. I think we do that best. Myself, my staff can walk into nearly any business in the city of Yuba City and throughout the two-county area and generally know the owners by name, we know their pets, we know their kids. It, it is relational. We do that piece of this very well, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute. Of course, we have a business lending program. And again, to support our lack of ability to respond to these RFIs, we support infrastructure. And we'll talk about that a little bit in the form of how we do that and what it means to the community. So you know we serve Yuba-Sutter Counties, city of Live Oak, Marys, Hill, and Wheatland from a jurisdictional perspective, and then of course, all regional businesses. And Yuba City is not listed because you don't contract with us for actual economic development services. We still serve your businesses, we just don't necessarily serve the city in, in the same way we serve the other communities. So regional lending over the years, 229 local loans, $15 million in lending. Total, total investment leveraged was about 1.3 million or 103 million, creating 688 new jobs, retaining 474 jobs, and creating 84 startups. Pretty impressive from a tiny little group that borrows money from public institutions and, and provides, provides all that risk to ourselves, but benefits our local businesses. So lending in the city of Yuba City over these years, we've made 66 loans totaling about 7 million, total investment of 25 million, I don't need to read this to you, 230 jobs and 114 jobs retained, 33 startups. You, the city of Yuba City has been 50% of all of our lending activity throughout the years and can, continues about at that same rate. So all of the lending we do, of all the lending we do, 50% is done within the city limits. So some folks you might recognize, I know you've seen this before, Linda Soda Bar, Bridge Coffee, Carl's Jr., to name a few. Certainly businesses that are a big presence in our community and many times would not have even gotten off the ground had they not been able to receive funding, financing through the EDC. So you all know about our comprehensive economic development strategy. It is a requirement of the Economic Development Administration. So that is part of our obligation to being a district. You, for the first time in 15 years, participated in this last year. And we, we rewrite it, we update it annually and we rewrite it every five years. This year was our five-year. So the document came before you for acceptance in July, and off, off we go. And I'll tell you why that's important in a minute. So we talk about business retention, retention and expansion, and that's something that I'm very proud of, of what we do here. You know, some components to that are the business walks, the business resource seminars. We manage the Yuba-Sutter Business Consortium. It is actually a subcommittee of the EDC. We assemble industry-specific businesses. We created, for example, the Yuba-Sutter Healthcare Council. We created the Manufacturers Association. And oftentimes those ebb and flow based on the need of those industries. We, on a day-to-day basis, provide one-on-one business assistance. And then we have most recently created, in conjunction with the Chamber and financially supported, a business-specific webinar collaboration. So, Grant, the way we can provide financial support to our local jurisdictions are through our grant writing, research, and management. jurisdictions are through our grant writing, research, and management. We also can assist you with waivers through the CDBG program. Sometimes that can be a, a pretty tricky thing to navigate. And then we also can do other special projects, and you'll see some examples of that in a minute. So other stuff we do, I am the Executive Director for the Sutter County Community Action Agency and the Yuba County Community Services Commission. Those are the agencies that receive CSBG funds to combat poverty in the region. We most recently, or started last year, I guess, took the lead for both counties in the census marketing campaign. Pleased to announce that yesterday was the close of the census, and we actually finished above our targeted goals and exceeded the 2010 percentage count of the, the community. So super excited about that amid COVID, when we couldn't get out and do what we had intended to do. We managed to, to pivot and, and be able to accomplish the goal. So we also have managed the COVID-related loan and grant programs for Yubusutter Counties and the city of Marysville. And I wanted to talk about that. I had some additional notes. You'll bear with me. So as you're aware, Sutter County enacted an emergency loan program with general fund money. This was early on in, in April. We processed 46 applications within 10 days, completely processed them, loan applications. And the majority of those were processed in the first three. We made 14 loans totaling $600,000. 12 of those loans totaling $560,000 were made to city of Yuba City businesses. So the majority of that money stayed in your city. Sutter County Emergency Grant Program, we, we took off on the, the first round of that, processed about 110 applications. We made 41 total grants, just shy of about $352,000. 39 of those grants were made to Yuba City businesses, totaling $334,000 and some change, $1,000. So in conjunction with running those programs for Sutter County and for, yeah, both for Sutter County, the loan and the grant program, we also ran concurrently programs for Yuba County in both grants and loans, and the city of Marysville as well. This week, we kicked off an additional Sutter County Grant Program, 150 million, or 1.5 million dollars, and another $800,000 for local nonprofits. So we, we have been busy getting money into your community, into the hands of our local businesses. Some of the other things that we do, we share seats on the Chamber Board of, the Chamber of Commerce Board. I also sit on the GAC Committee and their Economic Development Committee as their, their lead. The Yubusutter Lodging Association, Homeless Consortium, California Finance Consortium, North Central Counties Consortium, and Sutter Community Affordable Housing with Councilmember Cardoza. So the partnership with the EDC, you have agreed over, last year, to provide a $25,000 investment so that you can be included in the comprehensive economic development strategy and become part of the district again. That is, what that does, it allows you the ability to, number one, be eligible for USDA grants, because it is incumbent on you being included in a SEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So that's what your, your contribution in 2019 bought, paid for. And we also have, at times, suggested that we consider, at, at your need, a fee-for-service arrangement. So whether it be grant writing or research, we too have some very robust research tools, both front-facing access on, through the internet, and then back a house that's a little more robust, and we can do things a little more specifically. So here's, here's what we can do for you, should you find a need and think that there's a right partnership fit. We can do grant research, writing, and management. We can create community profiles. I do believe that we assisted with GSAC when they created your, your front-facing page on their website. Statistical data, on-demand, site selector event, special project management, and then, of course, graphic design and publication production. And so I think there's one thought that I would ask you to consider or, or recognize and realize. We have written and, and received, successfully written and received, tens of millions of dollars in grants for the others, the others in our community. They range from everything from infrastructure to water, wastewater, HHS, OES, base realignment enclosure, planning grants. Every time I can offset a department's budget, for example, OES, with $300,000 for their mandated five-year mitigation planning, it's $300,000 that they have in their budget that they're not going to spend on something that, that they could be spending somewhere else. So we've talked about it at the staff level with Diana. It's important for us to be able to communicate with staff so that they understand where they can come to us when they need help. And that's all we want to do is be helpful. One $1 million grant that we're successful in obtaining for you pays for 40 years of your, your SEDS participation. It, it's too easy, in my opinion. You, you need to be reaching out. You need to ask. We need to be working together. And I think we can provide significant benefit to the city of Yuba City, should you have a need and want to participate that way. Happy to answer any questions?
The mayor. First, thanks for the presentation, and thanks for taking the time to meet with me personally several weeks back. I appreciated that. As I mentioned before, kind of thirsty for knowledge, so it's good to get it straight from the, from the person. And you are the person. So...
We don't know what we don't know.
I guess the, the first question I have, and this is probably a simple one, is the, the slide that you had up there, there was 25 or 26 million in contributions to the city. That's awesome.
Whoops.
I think this is probably going to tie into your discussion on the grants.
So which, which slide?
Keep going. One more, I think. There you go.
The loans.
Yeah, no, the 25 in total investment, 25, 900. So help me understand a little bit, you know, what, what was all that? Is this grant stuff that you did for, for us that, or?
So no, this is actual leverage for gap funding or startup funding that we ceded. So you come to me, you have a million-dollar project, your bank's going to put in 700,000. We can do 200,000. You're going to put in 100,000 yourself. Now we have a million-dollar project. So we've done $25 million in projects total, only through our loan program.
Gotcha.
So it's just leverage.
Yeah, one thing that continues to, to, I think, ring true in both conversations is, is having that business development person or a community impact specialist, you know, whatever you want to call it, that, that is responsive to, to, to both entities. And I guess, you know, my, my, again, history with the city is, is that we sort of sputtered and, and, and this goes way back. This isn't just recent. We were sort of sputtered with economic development. I know economic development people will probably maybe take some issue with that, but, you know, what I've seen is some, some good stuff, but maybe not as, as longstanding. So, you know, my, my takeaway from both presentations is we need to consider, you know, having somebody that you, both GSAC and the EDC can reach out to. I think the, the last thing I would have, it's just a question, is, you know, we have a representative on GSAC, and maybe Scott, Steve, Michael will want to weigh in on this, too. We have a representative on GSAC, and we have a representative on your board as well. What would, would it be valuable to have that same person on both boards rather than one going one way and one going the other, in your opinion?
It probably wouldn't hurt from ARPA's perspective, so that the information that they're bringing back, hopefully to the rest of you that are on the council, is consistent, and there's a better understanding of how to collaborate those, those efforts.
I'll keep my distance and try to, you know, project loud enough, but I would agree with what Brenda said. I think that would be, again, also knowing that council members are volunteers, and your time is valuable, and...
But we're Zooming now, so it's, we don't...
I think that is helpful, that I have to understand and know what each party's doing, rather than align with, you know, two different members.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
To the mayor, thank you. Brenda, very well done. I really appreciate you outlining and really zeroing in on the issues for us as a city. And I, I do agree with you, Vice Mayor Boomgarnau, the concept or the idea of having a representative from the city, the council, or, we definitely need to have an employee from the city that works specifically with economic development. In particular, when we're trying to build, if we build anything with infrastructure where we're very weak, and not having that laid out in advance for us to do any particular development that could just be done within most people's expectations is a couple of years, and the reality becomes 10 to 20 years because the funding is difficult and the planning, and we're just not always doing that correctly. I, I say from my perspective. But my question to, to you is, knowing all, all of those things and the years that your team, and I know you and I know your team really well, what do you, what do you think is the biggest challenge that we need to, as a council, be focused on economic development? From your perspective, like, what's the things that we need to start understanding better as a policy and financial decision-makers? As, yeah, from your perspective of being in our community and, and knowing you're so engaged with many folks?
So my short answer to that would probably be, you know, we've done a number of planning sessions. We've done some visioning sessions within the city of Yuba City and regionally. I, I think we need to buy into a plan. We need to evaluate that plan, prioritize the needs to meet that plan. You know, if, if it's our goal to have an industrial park located within the current city limits or somewhere else, we need to be doing that now, right? And we can be looking for the infrastructure to support that, the water, the wastewater, the, the power, whatever, whatever that need is. I think we have failed ourselves in, we've had lots of planning, but we really never have taken that plan and run with it. We really have never prioritized that. And so it, it's a great plan, and it says we need some new beautification things, some new signs at the city entrances. That's not what I need as an economic, an economic developer to help you get to where you really need to go.
Right.
So we just need to set those priorities.
And I'm, I'm glad you said that. If you go to the last slide, because that's when you're talking about the resources that potentially you could help us as a city to find some grants and help us pay for a position that has been mentioned. Or Councilman Shaw also mentioned himself of, of the need of, you know, better coordination and management of these things. So if we were able to get to that place, EDC could help us with potentially looking for some funding to, to pay for this individual or to pay for this particular grant or plan that you mentioned. The other part that we haven't integrated, and maybe the mayor will bring this in, is to our Economic Development Commission that the city has as well. And I believe that you met with him, mayor, so you'll probably add to that. And so I, I, I'm a big, I'm a person that likes to have things coordinated and not, you know, duplicating and spinning our wheels in separate directions. It just doesn't make sense to me. It just baffles me. So...
So there's a couple, a couple things that we as a community, community could do. You know, there could be an opportunity where we bring a Yuba City-specific economic developer into our organization. It's much less expensive for me to hire people than it is for you all. We can get quality people. We can offer them guidance and, and bring them through that way. But they can be specific to you, or halftime to you and halftime to, to something else. I mean, there's lots of ways we can position that. I, I think it's, I, I'm going to go back to what I said just a few minutes ago. Our first step is to prioritize what our need is. Let's, let's figure out what our vision is, and then let's prioritize that before you hire someone. And I say that because you're going to want somebody that can specifically manage whatever that vision is. And my skill set is different than Scott Michael Stevens' skill set versus Barry's, right? And so we really need to understand what you need. Do you need a salesman? Or do you need somebody that can understand and respond to an RFP like I can?
Right.
That knows our properties inside and out, knows how much power there is on 40 Mile Road and where the substations are, and where, you know, there's, there's different skill sets that are going to be required to accomplish whatever we determine that goal is.
I'm glad that you said that because it makes me think about when we're doing, you know, improving for, through, through GSAC, you know, improving the roads or through, you know, the flood control agency. We have all these commissions and committees, and this economic development person, whatever that title, title becomes or whatever that duties become, they really need to be interconnected to all of those pieces to make sure that we're just not swimming out there in different directions, that we really get behind something and make something happen.
You need to be specific on what your need is, and then find the person that can meet that need.
And I like getting things done, so I really would appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
Next, through the mayor, right? So Brenda, thanks for being here tonight. You've already hit on some things, and I, that, that I think the past conversations have brought up frustrations that the city has just felt over the past decade or more. And, you know, taking the history lesson back, at one time, you guys were our economic development. Then we took it in-house and got no better results, you know? And then we're trying to go, well, what do we need to do? And we're all trying to find, how do we get Yuba City growing? And I think you just nailed it on the head. And we've been, as they say a lot of times, we've been in paralysis by analysis. We got a nice plan. It's collecting dust bunnies on the shelf. But until we put a plan in action, we're going to never get anywhere. And so having that component helps. But I am, anybody that knows me, I'm, I don't care about how the milk got spilled. It's just, let's don't do it again, and let's go forward. So I'm always forward-thinking. And that's where my line of questions really come in. And with Scott's presentation, and he was talking about right now, if he gets a project, it comes to you. But with your presentation, we're only in the SEDS. So...
Correct.
I'm just trying to figure out here, what happens if a project comes to you and it really fits Yuba City, but we're not under contract, you know, with you for those services?
I present the site anyway.
So what?
I do present a Yuba City site when appropriate, anyway. And I've done that several times.
Okay. But where does the city fit into, it, it's like a wagon wheel, and we're all spokes. So where does the city really fit into that? Because we've all got a part. Scott, Steve, Michael's done his part. Send it to you, Brenda. You're doing your part. But at some point, the city's got to get fit in there. And I, I like the idea of, like you said, having someone dedicated to us that would understand us. That's, that's actually moving in the right direction. But in the process, if, you know, Elon will not move from San Francisco to Yuba City because he's getting the heck out of California. But if he was to move to Yuba City and build a Tesla plant, tell me what that would look like if Scott send it to you and get it?
So generally, generally, the way the, the leads work most often is go biz. The state agency gets a lead. They present it to GSAC and GSAC, and they also send it to us directly. So I, I may get the same lead multiple times from multiple different organizations. When there's an opportunity, and we have a site here that fits, an RFP can, can start us 10 pages. But when you get to the almost cited, it, it's a document that's thick. And it is chock full of information about water and groundwater and wastewater and air quality and power and all of these things, very site-specific. We do that for the region when we get a lead and when we can respond, which again, is not very often, because the one thing we have done... very often, because the one thing we have done regionally pretty poorly is, is plan and provide infrastructure. So it's not often, I mean, it's more often than not that I have to say, I'm sorry, we can't submit a, a site today for this project, which is very unfortunate. But, but when we can, we do it.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that as well, she's absolutely right on the go biz part, but I would probably say half to two-thirds of our leads that we send out don't come from go biz. So--
Okay.
But again, they're all, they're hyper-specific and to Brenda's point, there is a lot of detail you have to turn around in a very short period of time.
Right. So, again, looking forward, really, where we have to start isn't with so much a key individual. It is setting the priorities and development of that strategic plan, refurbishing that strategic plan, that you're gonna play a key role in. So what kind of timeframe are we really looking at? And as your board had this conversation, or is this something you're presenting tonight to us? I'm just trying to get understanding where we're at in this process, because it's, it's what needs to happen. Because you, you set the priorities and goal, get the plan, get the buy-in from the entire region, and then now we're all on the same page, and then we can start filling in those key players that need to be there. So where, where is EDC at with this?
You've not asked us to do that for you. Not up until tonight have we had this discussion.
Okay.
We're happy to assist you with that. We can walk through the process, we can do that planning, we can start setting those priorities. The one thing that was, made me more aware of the importance of infrastructure than anything was, early in my career, I've been at, in economic development here for 20 years. Roseville had made major investment in infrastructure 10 years before HP cited there. We should have been doing this 30 years ago when the EDC was standing before a council at the Yuba City council chambers saying these exact same things. I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, and let's do it right this time. Let's do it and charge forward and, and make it work.
I absolutely agree. Back to my question, you're talking about sites, a, a specific plan for Yuba City, but shouldn't you be developing one for the entire region that you--
That's what the "sits" is, Councilman Shaw.
Okay.
That is what the comprehensive economic development strategy is.
But your prioritization in that, shouldn't it be for the region? Are we just gonna do it by city, county? Have, had, does Sutter County have a prioritization inside of theirs? Does Live Oak? Does Marysville?
They do with their public works projects, yes.
Okay.
And so does the city of Yuba City. Your projects are listed and they are prioritized as well. And then there's the regional priorities, which are more broad in scope, right? But yes, you do have, but I don't think there has been enough consideration on, okay, here's our goal. We are going to put in, for example, again, a, a industrial park on George Washington Boulevard that is 200 acres. Where are we gonna get the land? How are we gonna get it served? Those are the steps that we have to, to just keep marching toward. So, okay, we have to secure the property. How are we gonna get it? Who's gonna pay for that? Who's gonna own it? Who's gonna manage it? Right? Then who's gonna manage the project? We still don't have water there, we still don't have wastewater there, we still don't have power, we don't have broadband, all of the infrastructure. How are we gonna work together to do that? That's what we really need to define. What do we want? What, what do we want it to look like?
Right. Okay. I'm, I'm good for now, but thank you.
To the mayor. So, that's right where I was gonna ask you. We have land that's already zoned for an industrial park down on, unless it's changed in the last five years, that's zoned, quad bit acreage down on Garden Highway and Lincoln Road. But we don't own the land, there's no infrastructure on it, and we don't have the money to do it right now. So you're saying that you could possibly help the city getting grants or money for us in order to get the land and put the infrastructure there? Because it's all sitting there on Garden Highway. All they gotta do is blow it to the levee. So is the main thing.
And cut an ingress road in, right?
Well, yeah, they're--
I mean, it's got its challenges--
I think that's what blow to the levee means.
Well, I don't mean, I don't mean go through the levee, but to, up to the levee. I'm saying that--
So it, it is something that if, if we're seriously think that that's the best place given--
Well, our forefathers said--
Right. But is that still relevant? The way the city has grown out is that, does it make sense to put an industrial park in an area that already has some traffic problems? Not that those can't be mitigated, but it's also very close to housing.
We have a nush part right next door to it. There's one right next door.
We do.
Yes.
But, so we need to, we need to bring those things out, dust them off. Is that where our focus is gonna be? Then yes, EDC can march right alongside and help guide the process.
Okay. Well, thank you on that question, and thank you very much for the presentation, Brenda. Thank you for your time.
Well, I agree in industrial park, we're probably getting ahead of ourselves, but that's definitely a conversation I'd love to have at some point fairly soon. But first of all, Brenda, thank you very, very much for being here tonight. Really appreciate it, being part of the, kind of the economic theme of the beginning, it's not necessarily the beginning anymore, the major portion of the initial part of our council meeting. Really appreciate it, really appreciate the information, appreciate the enthusiasm. I think a common thing we've heard from a lot of folks tonight is not only the desire but the need for a liaison or a front person related to the economy, whether it be at City Hall, someone in your shop, or perhaps even both, to help the communication. I think what I was envisioning, what you were saying, Dave, is in conjunction with a plan, which would include something like an industrial park or some other visions that folks have that we come up with after consulting with, of course, many experts, a plan and then that front person, the person we go to, the person we have on speed dial that they're the conduit to all the other aspects, which would be Brenda's, EDC, GSAC, our local Economic Development Commission, even the Chamber of Commerce, to be part of that conversation so we can all do our, you know, work together as a team, put the pieces of the puzzle together and, and get her done. So I think this helps quite a bit. Do we, have we had any discussions with your, getting the word out to staff as to what you do and what, what their options are, or anything like that?
So our, our initial conversations between Diana and I were, you know, let me meet with staff first.
Okay.
And then this kinda got pushed up so that, because of the GSAC request for funding. And I'm happy to participate--
That's in the queue, though, honestly, it sounds like.
You know, that's my next stop.
Okay. That's all I wanted, all good. That's, I'm happy to hear that. Looking forward to further conversations and, anybody else have anything? All right. It's not on my thing here, but anybody from the public care to make a comment? Or we have a lot of hands. Margaret?
I just wanted to add, I have been on the board of the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation for 10, 11 years. And, and I've always seen the dedication of the staff that they have, and they are very, they are local, they are passionate, and they, they are very good at what they do. And whatever information and whatever you need from the EDC, I know Brenda and her staff will bring forward to it, and they are, they're very thorough. And I have noticed, ever since I did get on board, that the city of Yuba City was, had just gotten off the membership. And, yes, and I was very surprised, because I thought, God, what an opportunity, and the city chose not to be on top of that. And over those years, I have seen all the opportunities and the grants and the, I said opportunities already, but I've seen all that happen to other businesses in the community. And I think that is something that would be very beneficial to the city of Yuba City. And I just want you to take that in consideration, that you're not gonna get any more loyalty than, than, from this staff, because they were born and, and raised here, and they're very compassionate about it. So I have, I was not born and raised here, but I've been here over 30 years, and I, and they, and I still have that loyalty with the city of Yuba City. Anyway, I just wanted to state that, that you're not gonna get any more loyal and thorough partnership than the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation with Brenda's leadership. And every, every year, we commend her for her clean audits and just how, how they manage the whole program. It's, it's very awesome. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Some very good input. Thank you very much, Margaret. Tom?
Good evening. Is it cold in here?
Yes.
Okay. It feels like an icebox to me.
People think I'm being rude when I do this, but I'm really just cold.
So I wanna mention, I thought that Darren Gale had that job for a while, or for many years, as economic development. And I think that cost about 100 grand a year, and to me was fruitless. So I wanted to mention that. The, the situation for economic development, I think you have to consider too that economic development is being squashed right now by your health department. And from, I'm talking to restaurants that say they're getting badgered all the time, you know, by Dr. Wu and her program. So you gotta consider that. Businesses have been plummeted. Then also consider the inflation with the cost of living. So all this boils down to the average Joe making a living here in good old Yuba City. And, you know, the businesses, I don't think they're offering raises when the cost of goods are going up and everything else is, is inflating. Then also your cost of living for, for homes. People are, I mean, the price of homes are going astronomical too, so. Now for me, I live where the rubber meets the road. I, I am a business owner, and I'm, I've had one truck stolen from me this, this year, and due to have my second truck stolen from me at the end of the year. And these are from, this is from the state of California, the biggest thief out there. So I've got a 2000 truck that is rock solid, but they say I can't drive it anymore. So they pretty much stole that truck. And then I didn't notice any of them helping me when I worked my butt off to make the payments on that $60,000 truck that's got 50,000 miles on it, that they're telling me I can't drive at the end of the year. So, and then I want you to consider all the mass exodus out of California, because every week I talk to somebody new in, in my little world that says they're leaving California. So I think those issues need to be brought up. And, you know, the best, the best program is opportunity for private enterprise and get the government out of the way. That's what I believe.
All right. Trish, do we have anybody on the computer?
No, we do not.
Okay. That being said, Brenda, I, I had one question I wrote down, I forgot to ask you. Has there been any consideration or thought, that you're aware of, any thought, you know, particularly with COVID, one of the more conspicuous impacts we've had is our restaurants. Have they been given any consideration of maybe developing a restaurant association?
They are.
They are? Okay.
If I understood your question.
Yes. And so, since we're didn't mic, the answer to that question is yes, and they're meeting, it's loosely together and they're meeting fairly regularly.
Yes, I believe they have formed a formal association, but they are meeting fairly regularly. Sandra, Sandra Drowns is kinda spearheading that.
Okay.
It's no surprise, because she's pretty awesome.
Yeah, I'll give her, I'll give her a ring. Thank you very much.
Yep.
What did I win? All right.
It's for me.
Oh, it's for you. All right. We'll move on to number four here, unless there's anything further, I don't think there is. Number four, COVID. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
COVID-19, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, a quick update on where we stand with the state metric. It was, updated information was just released today. So according to the state's blueprint, blue, blueprint, that's a hard word to say, blueprint for a safer economy, there are four risk levels, and Sutter County is currently in the widespread level, the purple. However, if you look at our metrics, you can see that the adjusted case rate, so new cases per day per 100,000, was updated to 3.5, and then the positivity rate was 3.3%. And if you look over here at the table, so substantial has a new case rate of four to seven and positive tests of five to eight percent. Moderate has new cases of one to 3.9, and then two to 4.9% for the positive tests. So we made a lot of progress within the last week in terms of the numbers. And the way that the state system is set up is you have to be in, consistent for two straight weeks before you can move into the next tier, and then you have to stay in that tier for three weeks before you can be considered to move into the next tier after that. Our neighbor to the east, Yuba County, moved into the substantial tier today, and so their case rate per 100,000 is 5.6, their positivity rate is 4.2%. And so what that means is that there's some businesses that are allowed to expand services. So personal care services can now operate inside, restaurants are allowed to have some indoor dining. And in talking to Steve Smith, the CEO for Sutter County, he would anticipate that, you know, based upon the numbers for Sutter County, we would move into this tier as of next Tuesday. The one question that I'm not sure of, and we'll have to confirm or discuss with Dr. Liu, is whether or not, if, because our numbers support actually moving into the substant, or the moderate tier, I don't know if you can jump a tier, or if you have to make your way through in terms of going to substantial before you can move into moderate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I know I know this, but I'm gonna ask you to refresh my memory, Diana. As far as the criteria goes for each tier, do we have to qualify for a particular tier for two weeks before we can move into it? Or is it the other way around? Can we move into it? I guess we have to get some feedback first in order to move into it, but--
Yeah, so you have to, your numbers have to be consistent for two straight weeks to meet the next tier before you can move into that tier.
Okay.
Once you move into that tier, you have to remain in that tier for three weeks before you can be considered for the next tier.
All right. That was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
I remember now.
Any other questions?
I think the schools are starting to open up in a couple of weeks, right?
Some of the local schools actually opened up this week.
Hmm, okay.
For instance, Twin Rivers, I believe, opened up this week. And then I know, I believe that Yuba City Unified School District was meeting tonight to discuss opening up the K through 5 in a short period of time.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any comments on the computer waiting for us there, Tricia? All right. Anybody in the room?
I wanna go on record that I think it is the most ridiculous thing I have ever seen in America and around the world. What is going on with this COVID-19? Unbelievable. I mean, that's the way I see it. That's the way I saw it from day one, and that's the way I still see it. And, I mean, are we on the governor's plantation or what? What's the deal? Will, will anybody stand up? Now, I heard in Orville that a bunch of the restaurants just had enough and said, we're, we're opening our restaurants. And I think that's what it's gonna take. People can't be acting like slaves, so that's my opinion on it.
Okay. Did you have any more, anything? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to number five, public communication. Appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with the public health guidance, guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber and the Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any-- Do we have any public comment?
None received.
Nothing in here? Okay. Consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public care to speak on these items?
None here.
And seeing none. Through the mayor move to approve. Thank you very much.
Second.
First and second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye and opposed, none. Moving on to number 10, business items, Bridge Street widening consultant presentation. Hello.
Thank you. Actually, if I could just take a moment before I get into that, I would like to introduce Sierra Wakefield, who is our new city clerk administrator as of next Monday.
Good job, Sierra.
She didn't know I was going to do that. She's like, oh, my goodness.
Happy she has a mask on.
Right. Okay. So now we're going to transition to Bridge Street widening. And we're specifically talking about the section between Gray Avenue and Cooper Avenue. And so I just want to preface this that when we originally started the design for the section of Gray Avenue, we were really viewing Bridge Street as being a parallel route to Highway 20. So being the engineers that we are, we look at how do we cram as much traffic in through this section as we possibly can? And we designed a section to accommodate that. It's through working with CACOG and particularly consultant, Civilist Consultant, which Michelle's going to be giving us a presentation tonight, that we had to take a step back and evaluate, is this really the best route for the segment of roadway? It's you have commercial corridor to the west, you have a commercial corridor to the east, and then you have this residential neighborhood in the middle. And the city has been successful in purchasing the properties on the north side of Bridge Street through this section. And so there's opportunities in the future in terms of what to do with those properties. And so Michelle has, Michelle Reeves, has a presentation for us tonight. A little bit different than what we've done in the past is that she's going to be presenting via Teams. And so she's going to show up on the screen over where the city attorney shows up. And with that, I would like to introduce Michelle Reeves with Civilist Consultants. And then once Michelle's done with her presentation, we'll bring it back to me for a few additional comments. So Michelle? Welcome.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. It's working. So I'm going to launch straight into screen share. And I understand that you won't be able to see me once I go into screen share. So let's try that. Okay, so can everybody see the presentation, the first slide?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure. Okay. And then the next test is, does this slide move?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yay. Sometimes it doesn't, and then we have to start again. So I just wanted to express a little bit of gratitude, both to CACOG, who kind of put the original team together that worked on this, and then also the local government commission that is going to be working with you guys on an ongoing basis to kind of look at raising funds for road improvement in Phase Three. And then, of course, everyone at the city who worked with us on this. It was actually a really fun project. So I'm going to dive in because as usual, I'm going to cover tons of information in a tiny amount of time and attempt not to sound too much like a drug commercial at the end where they list all of those terrible side effects at light speed. But it's going to be a little bit like that. So we're going to start with how I break corridors down. So the first thing that I want to do is share with you kind of my thought process as I start developing work on corridors or start trying to improve economic performance on corridors. And the first thing I want to understand is just what are their authentic identities? And I break down identity into three different sections. And the first type of identity is what I call contextual identity. I kind of want to understand the context overall of the road. So for corridors, I have three big buckets of roads. And the first one is a rural road, which is kind of like a small town state highway. Might have a crazy mix of uses, kind of a two-lane road, commonly what you see on your way into small towns. I would say Phase Three, you know, feels a little bit like a rural road. The second kind of corridor is a mid-century corridor. And this is a road with smaller lot commercial, usually surrounded by residential. The small lot commercial has a lot of mid-century commercial structures on it. A lot of times these roads are three to four lanes. And then the last kind of road is sort of a wide load road. And this thing is just huge. It's really wide. It does not mix or connect with any of the surrounding uses, breaks some traffic patterns, and it's not connected to any sort of grid. And there are pieces or elements of kind of wide load road in your corridor as well. So Bridge Street has elements of all three. And again, I think the part that goes through the residential district, its dominant identity right now, I would say, in driving through that section, is kind of more like a rural road. So after I've figured out what the context of a road is, the next thing I want to understand what I call the identity of its section or its sectional identity. And the thing is, is that long roads do not have a singular identity typically. They have different sections of identities. And the best way to describe this is kind of just like, how do you feel when you're on the road? So I kind of looked at the identities from the highway over to the river, and they kind of go national strip, mid-century corridor, residential, rural industrial commercial, and then industrial. That's kind of how I would break down your sectional identities. And you'll see how we tap into that because we've got to work backwards from authentically, what is working in a section right now. I do want to just have a little detour is that this is, this little star is the gateway to your downtown. And it's in between the rural industrial commercial and industrial land, which is a pretty tough gateway for downtown. So a lot of people drive on Bridge Street, and this little intersection is doing nothing to remind me that I want to go hang out in downtown because you have a really awesome downtown. And just another second side note, I actually show the pictures of your really fantastic angled parking and the trees that you guys did, that whole treatment there on the main street is fantastic. And I show that around the country as a great example. So once I have an idea of these identities, I like to then start thinking about what's going on with site identity. So I want to know how individual sites, properties and buildings, what are they doing to give me a great experience as a consumer? Is there anything that's particularly catching my attention or making me engaged or excited about a specific place? And I'm going to be really honest, there's just not a lot about Mid-Bridge Street that's very memorable. I want to give you examples of how you can do that on a corridor. So one is local. This is from Auburn Boulevard in Citrus Heights. I don't know if anybody of you recognizes this building, but it was a long vacant restaurant. A lot of people think it might have been a church just from the shape of the building. But here's the before and here's the after, when it got renovated back into a restaurant with some wraparound outdoor seating, festive umbrellas, really bright color. I would remember this building even having seen it once. That's what I'm talking about with site identity. Here's another example. This is a building that was originally built as a bank in the mid-century. It turned into a used car dealership, but it had been vacant for well over a decade. It is on the edge of Portland on a busy corridor. So this is the before, and this is the during, and this is the after. And it turned into the Portland Mercado project, which I'm going to discuss a little bit more later. So these are examples of really amping up site identity and doing something that catches everyone's attention. And you can pretty much do this with any kind of building. And you can think about how you're improving economic performance in a district sometimes by just looking at how site identity is doing. So these are how I break down corridor identities. And when we went into kind of our big brainstorming planning session, this is some of what I wanted everyone to keep in mind before we dove into how we might tackle the residential section of the road. So I wanted to share that with you as well before I dive into. How does the road impact commerce? How does the road impact what can be successful on its edges? Because that's something that you have to think about too if you want the things that you develop and if you want road improvement projects to be successful. So very roughly, you need to recognize that wide roads or places with fast traffic, there are certain, certain things that can be successful and certain things that can't be successful on these roads. So these are the kinds of businesses that tend to thrive on these sorts of roads. Generally, I would say that small to midsize retail does not do well on these roads. And it doesn't do well on these roads for these reasons. You can't see them. They disappear. And you have no sense of what kind of experience or what they would offer. And so you just don't interact with them. So it's very tough for small to midsize retail. And people don't like living on these roads. So wide roads and fast-moving traffic roads are never places people want to live. Therefore, developers never want to build residential along these roads. The second kind of road, you know, broadly characterized would be a narrower road or a road with slower traffic. So in this kind of road, you can kind of put together a typical collection of brick and mortar businesses of various sizes, and they can generally be successful. Residential, the bottom one, likes to be on these kinds of roads. Industrial, though, does not generally tend to like to be on these roads. So it's really important when you're looking at how to tackle commercial land on either side or any kind of land, development on either side of a road. It's just working backwards from the realities of what can be successful on those roads. So since you're widening the road, we're going to have to think a little bit from this toolkit of wide road, fast traffic as we're looking at developments. I want you to keep that in the back of your head. And then we're going to kind of dive into some of the brainstorming that we did back in July. And we kind of used Zoom to within an intuitive life and did a lot of virtual tabletop drawing, which was really fun and actually super effective. And we were really working backwards from these three goals. Like, we don't want to lose that really sleepy residential feel on the road. And could we make the road widening a project that would actually make the community better? And, and trying to specifically think about what we might be able to do with some of the city-owned properties. So I want to give you a quick summary of some of the things that we came up with. And I'm going to break them into two buckets, design and development. So let's start with design. And I wanted to say, before you dive into anything about design, the fundamental motivating factor needs to be that Bridge Street is a neighborhood. There are two parks, a nearby high school, and houses on both sides of the street. So everyone who goes through here needs to remember that this is a place to be, not a place to pass through. And a car needs to at all times feel like, kind of like, excuse me, I'm coming through. I know maybe I don't belong here. That's how you need to think about it in terms of design. So let's talk about what that means in a practical way. And the first thing that I want to mention is the wall. Walls are terrible, and they have no place in our communities. And they tell a story of separation. And what a wall is basically saying, and everything that you see in yellow on this drawing is where you're going to have a noise wall. What a wall basically says is that this thing we're building so doesn't belong here. We need to build a wall to block it off. So it's a very powerful story that we're really going to have to mitigate. And so that means that in these lots here, where you guys still own property, we really need to develop that property. So we're just blocking the wall, and people won't even notice it's there. But these walls that are over here, where the walls are going to be visible, you're going to have to really think about how you are using landscaping and lighting and decoration and other kinds of things to soften these walls and maybe create a gateway to Lloyd Park on either side on those walls so that you're really mitigating that idea that it's a wall. Because they're really damaging to communities, and they're very hard to make successful places where you have big giant walls. Second thing I want to talk about is lighting. So the secret sauce of mood, whether I'm trying to make a district better, whether I'm trying to make a store perform better, is 100% lighting. And if you know anything about making movies, the way that they make you feel in a movie is tied to both music and lighting. So if they want you to feel blue in a scene, they literally put a blue filter on everything. So lighting is the secret sauce of mood. And I want to talk about a couple of different things with lighting. So the first thing is fixtures. So these fixtures that you have in the more industrial section, these are kind of like freeway fixtures. These are really big, wide load road kind of fixtures that do not say cute residential neighborhood, place that you might want to be or you might want to walk. So you're going to have to really think about how you're fixturing. The second thing is the color of your light. So I want to go back through. If you look at this picture on the left, this is Dyersville, Iowa. I was just working there. It was actually my last trip before COVID hit in late February. It did start snowing, in case you were wondering. I always seem to travel to the Midwest for work in winter. And they're the home of Field of Dreams, the movie. And they have a super quaint and charming downtown. And what's fascinating is, is they have beautiful light fixtures, but the bulbs that they put in there are this terrible blue-green light. And so A, it looks like a runway, if you look at that photo on the left. And B, there's no warmth to it. And C, it actually makes it hard to see the buildings next to it. So the degree, like the brightness of the light and the color of the light really changes the mood on that. So basically, the picture on the right, that warm kind of fuzzy light, that's below 3,000 Kelvin. So a lot of times I have public works people that just run out and pick a light bulb because they're just looking at power, and they're not thinking about color. So color is really, really important in this district. And then the last thing that every public works person should be thinking about with lighting is that LEDs are programmable, and they can actually be different colors and different brightness levels, so you can adjust them. Because sometimes a public sector light that we put in in a residential neighborhood might be literally shining in somebody's bedroom. And being able to dial down that light a little bit or being able to change the color to create a festive holiday environment, all of those things are valuable and should be thought about as you're buying fixtures. Next up in design is lane width. So if we have narrower lanes, speed is reduced, noise is reduced, safety is increased, and small business can be more successful on its edges. And so we talked about how we could reduce the lane width from the original plans, which were a freeway lane width, down to a lane width that still works for trucks, but is going to really slow everyone down. And then on-street parking. So originally, the plan had on-street parking on the south, but not on the north side. But all the property you own is on the north side. And I think there's some real opportunity to redevelop those properties, but we're going to need some on-street parking because it's going to be pretty hard to redevelop those sites and have a lot of off-site parking or off-street parking for those. So we talked about reintroducing on-street parking on both sides of the street, which if you narrow the lanes, you have room for. And then lastly, this is a neighborhood, and you've got, you know, sort of two things going on on both edges. So as you're redesigning this, you might want to think about a gateway element on each side. So just visually let people know you're kind of going through a different place than the industrial or the mid-century commercial that's on either side of it. So you can give people that visual cue as they're going in. So those are some of the, you know, sort of speed review of what we covered in terms of design. And now I want to talk just a little bit about development and what we talked about. And actually, it was interesting that you guys were weighing in so much on economic development because I think that you should be thinking of these parcels from the perspective of how you are using them to forward economic development goals in your community. How can you help build wealth for local people? How do you create entrepreneurship opportunity? How do you offer amenities for the neighborhood? Create a buffer between the houses and the road. And very importantly, how do we hide that wall? So those are all things that we can do. And I'm going to work west to east. And this was the map that was provided to me of the city-owned parcels, which are hash marked in green. And so I've put the wall back in there. And there's two city-owned parcels that are here behind the wall in the residential section. Might be a really interesting place to experiment with very traditional kind of 1900s, small-town density, like a cottage commons concept. Those are being introduced in small, single lots around the country really successfully as sort of a gentle density. They're fantastic. So those two lots might be an interesting place to look at some new housing patterns or development. Next up, we've got the Lloyd Park. So I just want to say, a four-lane road with trucks and lots of traffic volumes, this is not a good edge to a park. Because as a parent, you're always going to be worried potentially that your kid might kick their soccer ball out into that road. Just a really tough edge. And so I think that we can soften that edge by thinking of a use that has a commercial front, can be permeable, so we can see over into the park, and also serve the people and interact with people who are engaged with park uses as well. So create kind of a soft edge and bring amenities to the district. And so I was thinking about a food cart pod, not a food truck pod. So there's semi-permanent installation. And so this is what I'm talking about. So I'm going to go back to that Portland Mercado example that I showed you earlier. So this was developed by Hacenda CDC, which does affordable housing for the Latino community in the greater Portland region. So this was the before of the building that I showed you, and this was the after. So I want you to see the really attractive, large parking lot piece of land that was associated with that building. So my big joke on this building was that we could meet our landscaping requirement with all the weeds that were coming up through the pavement. Because it's a pretty rough site. So what we did to bring active uses up to the street is we actually, the project purchased eight food carts. They control how they look. They installed them. They created a cool outdoor covered seating area. And they rent those out as startup incubator restaurant space for Latino entrepreneurs. And it has become this huge destination across the city. And it offers this amazing mix of Latin food. It's really, really fantastic. And it is my teenager's favorite place to go when they come home from college. So these are examples of the food cart installations there. So you could line those up on the edge of the park and rent them out. And then in this big sort of open seating area, you could also look at having some really large outdoor games, like a big Connect Four or chess, or they make like concrete ping pong tables. There's, there are all kinds of things that you could put out there that would be fun if you were eating. And they create a soft edge that also engages with the kinds of things that people might want to do in a park. So as we move further east and we look at the parcels that run just to the east of Lloyd Park, I went back to our wide road, fast traffic, what can be successful? And I picked up that idea of professional service. And I picked up that idea of professional service, and I was really inspired. I work a lot in very small towns all around the country. And in every small town around the country, almost all of them are on a state highway, and in the run-up to the town, there's always this collection of really small bungalows that line that rural road on the way into town. And almost every one of those bungalows has been taken over as a professional service office space in every town all around the country. And if they do it well, if you notice the one on the right, she did such a good job. It's probably the cutest retail store in all of downtown Primeville, Oregon, which is in central Oregon. Giddy up, she did such a fantastic job with that. But those little houses really convert well to small professional service, and you have some of those converted to that already on the street and operating. So you could easily take each of these little half lots and do colorful little small professional service offices that are built to look like small houses, so that they fit into the neighborhood character, they block the wall, and you could offer them for rents, or you could offer them for sale, and they would help to provide opportunity either for startup people who need office space, or for people who are ready to purchase something and have the wherewithal typically existing businesses. And then the last parcel over here, which is the furthest east and is adjacent to Moore Park, I went back to our list, and the fact that you have a lot of industrial on this street, and I was thinking about, how do we tap into that a little bit, but soften it? And so really looking at incubator maker space. So this is actually a picture from Twistworks, which took old sheds that were an abandoned ranger station right next to their downtown. And Twist has about 900 people in very north-central Washington, they're very close to Canada. And they turned these into small incubator maker spaces for a whole mix of different kinds of uses, including a high school shop space, and they turn these into production and manufacturing spaces for small startup businesses in the community. And so going through and doing sort of a concrete or a metal building with high ceilings and exposed tresses, and big glass roll-up doors that are roughly 1,500 to 2,000 square feet, those kinds of spaces are almost impossible to find, and they're really appealing to a very wide cross-section of uses, from maker, light, industrial, office, internet wholesale, all of those kinds of things. So these can also be divided into commercial condos and sold separately as well. So the last thing that I wanted to say about these kinds of spaces is, from an economic development point of view, you can manage them, since they're on-city-owned property, you could manage them a little bit like a port and rent them out on a reduced basis to incubate new businesses, or you could develop them as for-sale product and use them for that sort of leg-up wealth-building opportunity. And I'm happy to kind of talk about how some of those kinds of things get structured in the Q and A if you'd like. So those were some thoughts on design and development that we came up in the brainstorm, and that I kind of wrote up in the report that they wanted me to come in and discuss with you and answer some questions about. So I just want to leave you with a final thought about this road improvement project, because I actually think it's pretty exciting. And I think that if you really think about design and traffic speed and commercial uses, you can make this project provide economic opportunity for Uba City residents, create a unique and distinct brand for the neighborhood, offer new amenities that could be a draw to the district, create an environment that stresses safety and multimodality, and prevent the road widening from creating a pass-through place in its wake. So that is what I wanted to cover today, and I am going to go out of screen share.
Okay. Great, Michelle, thank you very much. Some very interesting ideas. I think I like all of them. It's very, very neat and kind of exciting. Anybody, any comment from the council, questions?
Through the mayor?
Sir.
Yeah, wonderful presentation. So the presentation you gave us, looking at all the small commercial spots or small houses and stuff like that, I didn't notice anything on parking. That's going to be a busy thoroughfare through there, and if it's a business, let's say a salon, you know you're going to have at least five to six cars there at one time, unless there's only two people in the building, or two stylists or whatever, but what are we going to do about parking? And that's going to be pretty speedy.
Yeah, so that's, so it's a good question, and it's actually something that, there are kind of a couple of different ways that you can tackle it. So in looking around the greater neighborhood, generally, when you look at those, and the reason I kind of modeled it after those small houses on the way into town, is most of those have no parking in your rural road into the small towns, and they still get leased out as professional service office. And what that means is that the environment helps to shape who's interested in those spaces. So generally, for a professional service office that doesn't have as much off-street parking, you're going to have uses that choose to come in who don't have a lot of intensity of activity of clients at the same time. So it may not be a salon that chooses to go into it. It may be like the contractor house that I showed. It may be somebody who's using it more as an office, and then people will either be biking or walking, or they will park in the neighborhood. The thing that's interesting about having the residential neighborhood and all the side streets all around that district is that the on-street parking in neighborhoods during the day are pretty empty because people are at work. So it dovetails pretty well with, you know, picking up some of the demand that exists from very small commercial space that is right on its edges. So my experience, because I do these kinds of projects all over the country, is you probably will find that the businesses, you're not adding so much inventory that on-street spaces on either side of the street and then in the neighborhood should be able to absorb what is going to be in demand from those spaces. And the people who go into those spaces will typically, by definition, choose to go into them because it will work based on their parking requirements, which just means that it may preclude super-parking-intensive uses going into them, and that's fine, because that's just the nature of what you have there.
The earlier plans, the dream plans for that corridor, they were going to put a, like an alley road in the back and put the houses closer to the street where people could park in the back. You didn't like that idea, our first plan or idea that we had?
So I think there's a lot to come out in the wash. I mean, I think there are a couple of different ways that you can handle it. So if there's room, and, you know, I don't have super-detailed plans with dimensions and, you know, where we can do curb cuts for the alley and backing in and out, so there's a lot to work through. But if you could do an alley load with one or two off-street spaces in the back, I think that would be valuable. I think it's just, you know, I'd have to kind of play, and there's a lot of iterating to do. So I just would want to play around with, are we ending up with a size that makes sense? And are we ending up with, we really want the identity on the street to feel residential still, so that we have a buffer and an identity that still keeps it, you know, kind of feeling like a neighborhood. So as long as it just doesn't get hyper-dominated by a lot of parking, you'll still tend to find that in these kinds of uses, you know, it's going to be like the hearing aid person that you have further up the street. Like, those are the kinds of uses where you tend to have, you know, not a lot of people backed up. You have serial appointments they might need. They'll use that off-street parking that goes off the alley load for employees or for the owner, and it's usually driven by the owner. And then customers will still find spots to park on the street. And you're going to have a fair amount of spots on the street when you're done with the product, project.
And then last question, you were showing the small businesses model and stuff like that. The city's not really in the rental business. That's not really the, that's not really what we're supposed to be as a rental company. So if we do do this, we're going to have to tell the developer what he has to build on this project, and say, and it's the size you have to build, this is what we want, if we do sell these properties. So is that in your plan or idea?
So one of the things that you can do, so if you want to exit and you want to sell them, you can still develop them as the owner, and then you can think about how you're going to sell them and who you want to benefit from that sale. I mean, you have an opportunity, when you own property, to think about how you're driving that. And even if you're not interested in being a landlord, for instance, you also could think about, if you're interested in incubation space and providing affordable rental incubator space, are there nonprofit entities that would be interested in managing that for you? So it doesn't necessarily have to be something that you manage yourself. So you could develop something on an incubator basis. So the Portland Mercado project that I showed you is not actually owned by Hacienda. They developed it, but the city went ahead and leased that property to them for a dollar so that they could develop that project and make that project happen, which has been a great economic incubator for the Latino community in Portland. So there are different ways to structure things, so that you could potentially still have those units be for rent. If you wanted to develop them for sale, then I would say that your options are to, I would most likely want to develop them as an entity, like as the city developing them, and then thinking about how you're selling those, whether you're dividing them into commercial condos or for fee simple sale, like the small houses. Who's benefiting from that sale, and what are you trying to foster with the sale of those? So are you trying to foster specific kinds of businesses, or are you trying to do wealth building for communities who are often shut out from buying and owning commercial property? So there's a project I didn't show up on the screen that I worked on here in Portland that was in a traditional African-American neighborhood, and so they did a project called the Vanport Project, where they took an old car dealership, divided it up into commercial condo spaces, made it pretty cool, and then they sold them primarily to women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and longtime residents in the community. So thinking about how you're developing and who you're selling to and who benefits, you want the development of these parcels to go to and benefit, you know, Uba City residents and people who've been there for a long time, and businesses and people who are really investing in your community. Or you want it to benefit people who are typically shut out from these kinds of opportunities. So the example I just shared with you, the Vanport Project, that was the one where we brought together some different partners, and we sold those for about a 10% down payment and 0.3% interest for 10 years. And so the buyers were able to buy something for roughly the same monthly cost as leasing. And then we also use new market tax credits to help to fund the project, and those sunset after 10 years, so then the interest rate reset. So it was very successful at attracting sort of a really interesting range of businesses, partly because they got this opportunity to buy that made it accessible to people who had existing businesses and knowledge and expertise, but just couldn't get over the hump of a 25% down payment with a full build-out at 100 bucks a square foot.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Through the mayor, this is Councilwoman Greg Sospandola. I agree with you, mayor, I really liked the whole concept design. I'm on the other end of it, thinking that it would be a really good investment for us, in particular with the EDC conversation that we had prior to, I have heard about the pods in Oregon and how successful they are up in that area. The design is just, I think, would bring some life and character to part of our city that is desperately needing it. So I'm supportive of how your concept and the work that you put together. How can we finance it is the question that I think it's on our mind, but I really do like all of those neat, interesting ways. And driving through there, you really made me think about when I drive through that street, because I really don't feel like I'm in the neighborhood, because my car is hitting the road so often, so hard, with all the holes and everything else on that. So, right, mayor? So I support the design, I really like it, thank you.
Michelle, real quick question. I know that, you know, these are some recommendations, and they're very good ones at that, as I already said. Is there, was there a, maybe it wasn't considered, but if it was, is there a reason why maybe work-live spaces didn't make that cut?
Why I didn't?
Work-live?
Oh, work-live. You know, live-work spaces are interesting. I've worked on a ton of live-work projects over the years. Live-work is super sexy. A lot of times, so there's an arc to live-work spaces. Probably the easiest way to describe this, so let's say, if I'm working in a district that is, has commercial space, but that space is not doing well at all, and it's largely vacant. What's interesting is, is I can often take those kinds of commercial spaces in really troubled districts, and I can repurpose them into kind of open loft. You might call them live-work spaces, but they generally just become live-spaces, because really cool funky artists generally can't afford, you know, kind of a tricked-out live-work space. So what ends up happening is they either become, so I'll give you an example, this was a district I worked in long before it redeveloped, so it was kind of a place where there were only industrial uses, no commercial activity on the ground floor, and a lot of drug dealing and prostitution and gun violence. And there are some spaces that a developer took on the ground floor and just kind of renovated into these kind of big open lofts. So for instance, there was an architect that took one who had a giant Lego collection, and he wanted a space where he could have, I mean, he had giant rolling bins of organized Legos everywhere, and so they often end up becoming just live-spaces, kind of big, open, lofted live-spaces first. And then, as the district starts to change, then they become usually some form of an office wholesale kind of use, and then as the district continues to change, then those spaces will often become some sort of a use that has more of a retail or professional service, like salon or spa. So there's kind of a life cycle to live-work spaces, and I think that this magical artist who has a fair amount of money for a 1,500-square-foot cool, you know, kind of lofted space, they tended not to exist as much as we want. So they end up being just residential spaces or being converted into office spaces. They don't usually end up being live-work because their price point is too high. The other challenge is that, so I guess I would back up. So when I'm developing a live-work space, what I want to do is develop something that will work in each of those three rough arcs, right? So I want a space that's flexible enough, that it can be any one of those three things, depending on how the district is doing economically. The challenge is, is that we're building this on a four-lane road that is projecting very high traffic volumes in the future. So that really makes the live part of it really not appealing, because people just, even in cool funky industrial space, they don't like being, you know, essentially on a highway or a freeway. So that's not to say, I mean, you could look at, there are also, from a development consideration, there are fire-life safety issues with fire separation and some of the other things to creating live-work space. So sometimes it's more expensive, you're either kind of like all-in for that, or you're not. So it's something that you could consider in one of these incarnations, but it makes all of the projects more expensive, and I still think it's probably not a super appealing environment to live. So that's kind of why I went the direction that I went.
Makes complete sense.
More than you ever wanted to know about live-work space.
No, you know, you clearly have a lot of experience, and you thoroughly answered my question, so I appreciate that. Anybody from the council, anything? How about from the public? Locally, or, okay, Tom, and then anything on the computer? Nothing on the computer. All right, Tom, it's all yours.
Well, I want to say that I think that lady's pretty sharp, and I like it too. One thing to consider that Manny mentioned is alley. I would be concerned about that, because that would be like a homeless hangout, you know what I mean? You might want to, you don't want this to be the newest homeless hangout in Uba City. So I just think that needs to be considered, because we do have that huge problem. So, but I thought that was well-done by that lady, and it looks great.
Michelle's her name.
Getting rid of the look of the wall, too. Who wants to look at another wall? Thank you.
All right, so our action, thank you, Tom. Our action tonight, of course, accept the presentation, provide direction to public work staff, should design modifications regarding lane widths, street parking, parkway strips, curb gutters, sidewalks be desired. Do we have any discussion on that? Yes, sir.
Through the mayor, the only direction that I would ask the public works to consider is based on my former job as a fire chief and the skirmishes with Pluma Street when they redeveloped it, and its emergency access. When you start moving things around, just make sure that, and I know you will, just make sure that we don't end up with choke points, et cetera, where we can't get an ambulance or a fire engine, or even Mr. Burns's comment in regards to a place for people to hang out in the back or something like that. Other than that, excellent presentation, neat ideas, and I think it makes a lot of sense for the city.
Yeah, so the direction that we're looking for tonight is really specific to the design of the roadway itself. And so if council's wanting to move this direction, what staff would propose is to go back and redesign the street section. So this upper section is the current plan, where you basically have two travel lanes each direction, the interior lane being 12 feet, the outer lane being 14 feet. We would actually change that, so that you still have the median, 12-foot median, you would then have 11-foot travel lane, 11-foot travel lane, and then 13-foot parking and bike lane on the north side. So under this recommended change, we would be adding that dedicated parking on the north side. We would also have Class II bike lanes that would be added. One thing you would note, under the current plan, we have a 10-foot shared path. What we've received a lot of feedback on that is that a 10-foot shared path is not necessarily effective in terms of when you're co-mingling bicyclists and pedestrians. So under this revised plan, we would go back to a six-foot sidewalk, because we would have that Class II bike lane on the section. So if council is favorable to going that direction, we will go back, redesign- So if council is favorable to going that direction, we will go back, redesign these plans to address, you know, have this new cross-section, and then bring that project forward to move it forward. Now, that doesn't address the wall. The wall construction is part of the improvement plans. That's one thing that I feel like there's a lot of opportunities to... Whether we address it through enhanced landscaping, or you work with like the Uba City Arts Commission to come up with some different ideas, to have artists put together ideas for ways to screen the wall or put art on the wall. And there's a lot of things to consider in terms of how we can enhance this neighborhood. Once Michelle did that brainstorming session for us, it really opened our eyes in terms of the opportunities with this corridor. And so we didn't... We wanted to take a step back and bring it before council, so that you could get the same information we did, and then provide us direction for it to move forward. And I also want to note Kevin Bradford, the Deputy Public Works Director, engineering, has been participating virtually this whole time, and so I know he's also online if you had any questions specific for him, too.
Through the mayor...
Thank you, sir.
So that's the same thing on the south side also, Diana? Same plan, both?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
So the 11-foot travel lanes are still very comfortable. You would move traffic. It would slow the speeds down when you're compared to 12-foot and 14-foot travel lanes on the north side, and then 12 and 12 on the south side. It does provide parking on both sides, and like I said, it also still has the enhanced features with the landscape median and then landscape planters on both sides.
I like it.
I do, too. The bottom one.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I like the bottom one.
Through the mayor, so per her suggestion, can we still go with the same lighting, or do we need to put street lighting instead of a... She said like an industrial lighting. Do we still want to use that same plan?
You know, we will evaluate that. The lighting on the section east of Cooper, if you've ever driven that at night, it's like as bright as day. And so with having houses on the south side, I think she brings up a very good point in terms of reevaluating the lighting there, making it more residential pedestrian scale. So it's not, as she noted, this highway lighting. Again, as engineers, we love it. We love having these big, grand streets and, you know... But setting that aside, we also appreciate, you know, taking a step back and reevaluating this and figuring out, how can we really honor the neighborhood and still provide some great opportunities for not only the residents that live there, but then also opportunities for the properties that we own?
Diana, I don't know if we got to this point yet or not, but she... Michelle also mentioned some sort of, I don't know if it's a structure or something that would signify a gateway. I'm assuming probably at Gray and one at Cooper. Have we gotten to that far yet?
No, and again, I would separate that from the road improvement project, stubout conduit and things like that, so if you need to run electrical to it, you have the ability to. But then work that as a separate process, like I said, either through arts council or something like that. And then through that, you know, what are the funding opportunities available to fund something like that?
Makes sense.
As you guys know, funding for this project is very limited. We've applied for grants in the past. We've applied for a grant currently. And, you know, to be able to address this in phases, so that we get the long-term plan, but we have to implement it in baby steps.
Makes sense. Thank you very much. I think you have what you needed?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
On to number 11, community panel for city manager recruitment and selection.
Through the mayor...
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and discuss this, along with my ad hoc partner, councilperson Shaw. Just as a matter for the public to at least have an idea of what's been going on, the process of hiring a new city manager was initiated several weeks ago, with the selection of councilperson Shaw and myself as the ad hoc committee representing the city council. Process has continued with the selection of a recruiting firm. Councilperson Shaw and I interviewed the firm, which was followed by a meeting between the firm and the entire city council, where the entire city council approved the firm. Councilperson Shaw and I have had several meetings with the recruiting firm over the past few weeks, have developed a recruitment schedule, as well as some basic procedural items. We meet with the recruiting firm at least once every two weeks, and we brief the entire city council on the process and the results of those meetings. The item before us tonight involves a selection of a community advisory panel, and the purpose of the panel is to participate in an advisory capacity in the selection process by meeting with finalists for the city manager's position and providing feedback through the ad hoc committee back to the city council. Tonight, councilperson Shaw and I are recommending the following for consideration and approval by the city council, is that we do go ahead and move forward with establishing a citizens' advisory panel. A couple key components here. Number one is, when we were determining the sectors and et cetera, we want that community advisory panel to be a manageable number. It would be easy to... There's a lot of talented people in the community, in our city, and it would be easy to put a bunch of people together to sit on this. But at the same time, there's two main things that we really need to manage here. One is to balance transparency with the confidentiality of the applicants, and also make sure that the advisory panel understands that, you know, the final selection is made by the city council, and that the advisory panel would be made up of folks who have some experience with hiring individuals at this... At the level and skills of the city manager that Uba City deserves. We're recommending that we limit the panel to no more than five people, that the panel participants to represent certain segments of our city. And if you look up at the board, this is what we've come up with, and we're recommending for the council to consider. Healthcare, a rep from healthcare, a rep from business development, a rep from the building and construction industry, a representative from public safety, a rep from the ag industry, and a rep from finance. We feel these are key activities and key components to the success of a city manager, and they directly relate to the services that our city provides. We are recommending that panel participants must either live within the city limits or do business within the city, that panel participants are seated, and this is important, in an advisory capacity only. Final selection of the city manager, as I mentioned earlier, is entirely dependent upon the city council approval. We would suggest that the names be proposed... This would be the selection process, is that if council approves these sectors, then the city council members would nominate representatives out of each one of those sectors to the city manager. The purpose of running this through the city manager is for Brown Act implications. Not trying to be hide anything, but it makes sense that, for instance, if I have five or six names that I want to put in, I would put them into the city manager. City manager would then forward those names to councilman Shaw and myself, without us knowing who nominated them. It provides for a process that doesn't involve a bunch of extra meetings that we don't need to have. We would like for you to consider, as a council, that you provide those names before the end of business on 10/12, October 12. That way, we can continue with our process and work with the recruiting firm. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to councilman Shaw to cover any ideas, or not ideas, but items that I did not cover, and certainly will be available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's been a privilege working with you so far. And my mic is off. There we go. Starting again, thank you, Vice Mayor. It's been a privilege thus far working with you on this. One of the things that I saw a couple of looks, because we talked about a manageable number being possibly five, I believe you said, but we got six categories. We could have one individual that might fit a couple of those. These are just the categories that we saw that emulate the responsibilities of the city, who the stakeholders of the city are, that really, you know, can discern those attributes we need to see here in our next city manager and in that advisory role. So, and I absolutely concur. The whole idea behind this is to do a different process than we did the last time, and get that community input in advisory capacity, and, you know, as you said, maintaining confidentiality with the people who are on that, the candidates that are here, because that is very vital, but yet being very transparent with the rest of our council members and the public as this process continues. And so, so far, great job, Vice Mayor, and I totally agree with these areas that represent what we need to have looking at our city manager.
Through the mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor, and councilman Shaw, for the work that you've done so far for us as a city and the council, in particular with taking the lead on helping us navigate this process with selecting a new city manager, which our current interim has done a fantastic job. So I just want to throw a shout-out to Diana. I really do... I agree with you. A manageable group is important. I also would like to see maybe consideration to expand the manageability of the number, and I will make my recommendations. I think I kind of got ahead of it. I ended up sending recommendations already. So I'm thinking that we possibly consider having someone from Sutter County Board of Supervisors also be part of that community panel. I was thinking someone from Uba County Board of Supervisors as well, because there are partnerships in the region. I agree with the financial piece of it. I was also thinking perhaps a representation from faith-based organizations, a person, you know, just to be more well-rounded in the community. I like the idea of having a young person on the panel, because they are our future. We are the present, and believe me, it catches up fast. Before you know it, we're not here any longer. So I really think someone, a youth, and for certain, I think education has to be added. Education is not even listed on there, and people come... Who, why, what's one of the biggest reasons people move to any location? Most likely is how good is that education system is. We don't even have them listed up there. So I think we need to add a representative from education. And if you're thinking business development, you know, because we have a large number of retail in this community, and retail, I'm speaking of it in restaurants, so maybe someone from the chamber could be a representative from the chamber, because they deal with economy as well. But those are the additions, and if there's any questions or saying, hey, no, that's too many, Grace, but at least I want to have my first priority, education. A rep on there from education. Second priority would be Sutter County Board Supervisors, Uba County Board Supervisors. And my third one would be someone from a faith-based organization, because our community has a stronghold on that and culture. So those are my top three that I would like to add on to the six, and maybe one person could wear four or five of these, but I really would like to have an odd number on there to help advise us. So those are my suggestions.
Okay. Any?
Myself personally, I'm happy with what the ad hoc committee has suggested. Five people would be more than enough. We don't need to get a rodeo going. You know, we've been on committees ourselves. When you get 10, 12 people on a committee, it takes forever. A five-person committee would suit the city just fine, and I think the suggestions that our ad hoc committee has made, I agree with their decision.
Okay. And, well, I couldn't say it better. I agree as well. You clearly put a lot of work and effort and consideration into the recommendations. Also appreciate your opinions as well. And for that, do we have any comment from the public on the matter?
So through the mayor, I want to get this...
Can we do public comment first? I've called for that.
None here.
Nothing? Nothing in the room? Okay, go right ahead.
So my recommendations of a representative from education, I'm hearing councilman Cardoza say not important? Is that what I'm hearing you say? And Mayor Harris?
I'm saying I'm happy with what our ad hoc committee has presented to us.
So the recommendation of an education representative on that is not important, then, Mayor Harris? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No.
Okay, so you don't think it's an important representative?
I'm not saying it's not important. We can go down a list of every profession that would be important, but we do need to limit it to keep it a management number. I am not saying it's not important.
I'm speaking of the education system that we have over 15,000 community children that attend our school system, and we don't have a representative on the advice... On the community panel?
Let me try to help you better understand...
Okay.
...what we were working through. Frankly, we think you represent education, and you're going to have the final say, and I think you're well-qualified to represent education in the selection process. That was part of the consideration of why we came up with the list that we came up. I don't think your recommendation or your suggestion of an education person is wrong. It's just that our thought process through all this was, we've got that person, and that's you.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. I just want to remind us that education is critical to whatever decisions are made in the growth or non-growth of the city. So faith-based, I hear so much from faith-based that they're with us a lot. So I thought that that would be a great addition to this as well. But these people may have some faith in them as a representative. I get that. And I think because we work so much regionally, that sometimes we need to have a representative from one of the board of supervisors from each one in the county.
Okay.
So, again, just to share with you, the thought process is, there's more than one panel involved here.
Okay.
And as it relates to relationships with Sutter and Uba County, it's not out of the realm of possibility that we would have staff members who would be interacting with the individual and who may be in a position to, you know, provide their feedback as a peer, if you will, on this panel. So it would be a separate panel than a community panel or a city panel.
Okay, so we're going to include somewhere in that process?
That's what... That would be our intent at this point, yes.
Thank you for clarifying that. That wasn't clear to me. Okay. I think we've gone through at least my top three, so thank you so much.
Okay.
And we're asking one more time, confirming no comment from the public?
None.
All right. So, let's see here. We have received the recommendations from the ad hoc committee. We have A, B, and C on here, and we need a motion.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make the ad hoc committee's recommendation of the community panel for city manager recruitment and selection, A, B, and C.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? There we go. Number 12, Proposition 68, per capita program allocation opportunity. Welcome, Brad.
Good evening, councilmembers, and happy Pink October. Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director, here this evening requesting council... I'll come back to that. Requesting council adopt a resolution authorizing the application for an allocation grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services through Prop 68 per capita program in the amount of $177,952 for the development of a new water feature at Gauchea Aquatic Park, and authorizing the city manager to execute and submit all necessary documentation related to Prop 68 per capita program. In addition, adopt a resolution adopting a Sequa Class 1 categorical exemption for the proposed project. As council is aware of, in 2018, Prop 68 was passed by California voters via the Senate Bill 5. In that bill... In that bill, there are two programs that provide funding. One is the Urban County Per Capita Program, which is, enables the counties to apply for funding, and then there is the General Per Capita Program, which applies to the City of Yuba City. The General Per Capita Program is an allocation of funds that are based on the, our city's population, and again, would be eligible for $177,985. Funds are available for local park rehabilitation, creation, and improvements to address deficiencies within neighborhoods and lacking access to outdoors. Funds, if received, cannot be spent on operations, maintenance, or repairs. Staff's recommendation to apply these grant funds would go towards the development of a new water feature at Gauche Aquatic Park. The location, which I apologize for not being a very good map there, but it would be going the new, water feature would take, replace the current one, which is, by the way, 12 years old, Gauche Aquatic Park is that old, and it would replace the old one. This is an idea of what it would look like. They are more modern, easier to maintain, based on the material that is provided, and we think it'd be a great asset to our community. The current one, these are just pictures of our current play feature with a lot of corrosion, rust, obviously, more of the same, again, and it's 12 years old. The funding would, from the grant, would be applied, all the funding from the grant would be applied to this project in addition to funds that have already been allocated in our CIP project of approximately $67,000. The total potential project would be $245,000. That is the recommendation, which please don't make me read it again, and I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time.
I don't see any from up here. Do we have any comment from the public?
None received here.
In the room? Nothing? All right, we have motion time.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to do staff's recommendation of Prop 68 per capita program allocation opportunity, item A and B.
Second.
All right, first and second, to adopt staff's recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Pass, you unanimously. Thank you very much, Brad. Looks like we can use that help over there. Number 13, his appointments to the City of Yuba City Boards and Commissions specifically for tonight would be the Youth Commission, and I know Vice Mayor and I, one day, we had two days of interviews, and then Councilmember Cardozo assisted due to an unforeseen conflict on Vice Mayor's behalf on both of those days, and my main takeaway, you, both of you may concur, we had four positions, three permanent, if you will, one alternate, and 16 applicants, young people trying for this. And I tell you, they, you talk about some impressive young people in our community that are, that are just poised to do great things. I wish we had, I kind of tried, but it didn't work out. We had, we had more room for them, for some of these folks. It made, they make you want to bend over backwards to help them, because they are on their way to some great things. And I'm excited for the, for the Youth Commission. I'm excited for these young people, and hopefully the folks that didn't quite get there this time will reapply, because they're going to be a great asset no matter where they go. I do not have the names in front of me, but we did make a recommendation of three young people and one alternate. One of the, the alternate, we did have an alternate, he has moved up to a, I guess, an at-large or, I'm going to say, permanent position. Very great people, so with that, if there's any questions from the public or on the computer or council, I would appreciate we move forward. No comment? Trish? All right.
No comments.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation of the appointments to the City of Yuba City Board of Commissioners.
A Youth Commission.
Youth Commission, excuse me, Youth Commission, by screening committee's recommendation.
All right, all those, excuse me, who have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None, thank you very much. Any future agenda items anybody would care to bring up? And we'll go on to council reports, beginning with Councilmember Cardozo, please.
All righty, we've had an exciting three weeks since our last meeting. I'm going to start off with meetings. Attended the Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority meeting, the Regional Housing Authority meeting, the Sutter Community Affordable Housing meeting, our Yuba-Sutter Homeless Consortium, their Feather River Air Quality Management District, the CDBG Ad Hoc Committee meeting. There was, I couldn't attend the Ambassador's Chamber meeting this last month due to a closed session here at the council. I'm going to go to city and community events. I was out with our Yuba City Police Department, great staff of men and women at our sobriety checkpoint on Bridge Street last time. With that street being redone, there's quite a bit of traffic going down Bridge Street between 10 and 2, 10 and 2 in the morning these days. I attended the 10th Annual Rest Lual, and for the folks that don't know what REST is, the REST Foundation folks are the ones that help keep the homeless in shelters during the winter, keep them warm, keep them out of the environment. I commit, to with Councilmember Shaw and the mayor, I attended the community prayer gathering here at City Hall grounds, and had 10 churches give their blessings to us. I attended the Golden Valley Auto Body impromptu car show last Friday night, got people out of the community, they did a wonderful job, everybody had fun. We had, the mayor and I had two forums that we attended the last couple of weeks. One, we'd liked the Yuba-Sutter Chamber of Commerce, and the second was the Feather River Tea Party, and I also had a radio interview with 93Q, and then attended the farmers' markets, and then an update for the farmers' markets. The Town Center will be closing here on October 17th, and the museum will stay open until October 28th, and that's it for me. Thank you.
And thank you. And Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you. So, I'll start with, I did also get to attend the community prayer, and-
Nope, you didn't see it.
Yeah, I was social distancing and wearing my mask, so I was way in the back, and what a beautiful event. It was really well organized and put together, I really thought, and listening to all the different prayers that they provided, it was, it was really meaningful, so I really appreciate us doing that in our community. So, then also, we met with the ad hoc committee that Councilman Cardozo spoke of, with Ben Moody and Jespreet, and we're working on the CDBG ad hoc to put the process together, so we'll be bringing that forward to the council here in the near future, hopefully to help us gauge that process better. And continuing to work with our Youth Commission, we are working on the campaign for this COVID-19 that is continuing to impact us in the community, and so we're hopefully bringing something together with our Youth Commission to provide some messaging for the younger community members to practice some health guidelines and precautions that are so much needed, in particular with communities of color, it's, the numbers are much higher, the need of understanding this is greater to know that, you know, social gatherings without having clear practices could literally, could literally take your life. I also want to acknowledge that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and having, I think now, five in my family who are breast cancer survivors, in particular, my mom, is really meaningful to, to know that it's important for women and men to get checked. It's a routine exam, but it could literally save your life. I'm going to talk a little bit about a personal situation, because I don't want to, I'm not bringing this up to make it a decisive or divisive conversation, and, you know, people have feelings about, and their thoughts about COVID, and I respect that. I don't think that anyone really expected for any of this to happen, and it's happening. So, I had an aunt who passed away from other complications in August, and she was in her 80s, so she lived a pretty full life, thankfully. So, our family decided to have a funeral, obviously, from her passing, and my family, my immediate family decided, we chose not to go to the funeral, because we wanted to protect our mom, because my mom has very fragile health. And so, in that, her children, adult children, all went, and many other people went, and my cousin, one of my dear, dear cousin, 54, his name's Sergio, Sergio Espendola, and he passed away from COVID-19, and our family is suffering a lot of sorrow from this. And I, and I'm saying to you that they didn't practice social distancing, they didn't practice wearing the mask. Some of them did, some of them didn't, and in this, a man, a 54-year-old, relatively healthy individual, his life was taken. He was hospitalized for four weeks. What he leaves behind, or what he started and now the family will carry forward, is he had, he had his own business, he had a small business, he worked for another company, he has four children, he has a wife who's, who's fighting breast cancer at this moment herself. And so, when you add those complexities on top of everything else, and when someone says to you, and I'm an elected official, and, and I, I get it, I get to, I get to hear from all angles, and I accept it, but when someone says to you, "This is not real, this is not happening," and my family is, it's happening to them. So, I just share to all of you, practice what you think is important for you, you and your family and around you, but I can say firsthand that I know COVID-19 is real, and I know that the circumstances that probably could have saved his life is everyone wearing their mask and social distancing at that funeral. The funeral was August 15th. My cousin died on September 27th. It was that quick, and I know we all have different opinions about it, and I'm sharing it from my perspective. And another grand person that is no longer with us, but I leave with, I end with this quote, "Women belong in all places where decisions are being made. May she rest in power, Ruth Boehner Ginsburg." Thank you.
Okay. I'm very sorry for your loss of your cousin, and best of, best wishes to his wife.
Expect me to follow that, Mr. Mayor?
I'm not going to ask you to be there.
No, I'm kidding. Grace, our condolences to you, and you're, you're definitely right. COVID is real. We can ignore that part, and we all have to use, like you said, the common sense God gave us to do what's best, and, and so, definitely condolences to you. I was trying to lighten the mood and, and get the mayor here, so, so oblige me, but, huh? So, anyway, my last few weeks have been rather busy with committees and a lot of ad hoc committees. So, first of all, back to Yuba-Sutter Transit. We did meet, one of the few things that's coming out of that is in the next few weeks, I believe at our next, either this next meeting coming up next week or the one following, we are supposed to start having potential sites released for the future home of Yuba-Sutter Transit. They've been doing a site study now for several months, and they're supposed to be bringing us back potentially, I believe it was five, Mr. Cardozo, that they were bringing us, so we will have that coming forward. Regional Waste Management Authority has been silent, but they have been working on what the future of the Regional Waste Management Authority is going to look like, and with that, I have a meeting with Mr. Martin and next week to start going over that as we meet next week and start looking at what the future of the RWMA is going to look like, whether it's going to be JPA or back to the cities or whatnot, so that is coming up. Been working on the Bog Stewart Master Plan. I think that we have finally taken at least a small step forward there, Mr. Vice Mayor, and that, I say that with optimism, hoping that we can get this done. I cannot stress enough that the city, the county, has missed out for years because of lack of housing, and it is imperative that, that we really come together and get this done. I made that very clear at our last meeting, that we've missed the boat, and every day that we sat here, we are missing opportunities for our community to grow, to meet the needs in the housing element, to make Yuba City more attractive to people that want to call this their home. As we talked earlier with GSEC, people are leaving the metropolitan cities and they're moving to the rural area. We have to have housing, and when I say housing, I mean all housing. We have to have affordable housing, duplexes, apartments, all the way up to gated communities. It's not one or the other, it's all, and all of those people are welcome here in our community. For the ad hocs, we've been working on the Development Impact Fee. Took that into the next. Vice Mayor and myself had a great meeting, I think, with Sabuca, and we're walking that forward, getting a better understanding there. We'll be meeting with them and getting the full committee back shortly to finish addressing the rest of the fees that our developers and our home builders are having to pay. And then, of course, as you've already heard, we've been working on the ad hoc for the city manager recruitment, so a lot been going on in the last few weeks, and, and with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Very busy. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Condolences from Karen and I. I know it's a tough situation, I know, I can sense how deeply you feel for the loss of your cousin, so. I try, I try to stay out of politics, so I'm going to deliver this, this one message, and it is not intended to be anything political, but I, I have paid attention to our city council race as of late, and there seems to be some sort of a threat of, we're operating without a city manager, and the city is, is, you know, somehow harmed by that, and so I'm going to take an opportunity to, to acknowledge Diana Langley, who has stepped up not only once but twice to competently, effectively, efficiently lead this city through this time as we, as we go through the recruitment for another city manager. So, if anyone out there believes that the city has been floundering because we haven't had a city manager, I vehemently disagree with that, and again, I just want to thank you for doing two jobs, as our Public Works Director and as our city manager, interim city manager. That being said, I want to thank Councilman Cardozo for, on a moment's notice, stepping in to take my spot with the interviews. I had something come up at work, and thank you, Manny. The Youth Commission, and the mayor touched on this, the interviews, just outstanding young people, you know, some as, as young as freshmen, that obviously have a heck of a lot of promise, and some that are seniors in high school, but really, really impressive. And we also interviewed some folks for Personnel Board, and I believe they're going through background at this point. As Councilman Shaw mentioned, we did have a master tax exchange agreement meeting. This has been a process that's been going on for a while. I do, I, you know, I do think we, we got some traction, and I do think that, again, I've said this a few times, I think we're closer. I, I think- think we're closer. I think actually, the finish line was in, is within reach. And I think, as Councilman Shaw mentioned, it is in the best interest of the city and the county to get this done as quickly as possible. And I'm hopeful that that will happen. Again, Councilman Shaw mentioned the meeting with Subufka. We, city's currently charging a development impact fee for levies. Many of, well, everyone, it's in the city's also paying a fee through Subufka for levy improvements. So this was a discussion, the beginning of a discussion with Subufka, to discuss, you know, what do they need on a go-forward basis? Is what we've been collecting on their behalf something they need to, to carry on? What other projects are in the pipeline? So we're, they'll be coming back to a subsequent meeting and reporting back. Very congenial, very collaborative type of meeting. And the ad hoc city manager, you know, this is a very important process. We're stepping through it with a lot more vigilance and taking into consideration what, what, what are, knocking the water off, didn't get you wet, though, did I? Darn it. A lot more vigilance and very appreciative of, of the feedback and the work that the recruiting firm is doing so far. We're not taking this lightly at all. And finally, I would like to congratulate Sierra again. It looks like we're going to be seeing a lot more of you. And, and, you know, that's a good thing, too. So with that, Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you. All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to get to what went through that hasn't already been mentioned here. I will take the time to congratulate Sierra, obviously, and of course, echo emphatically what Vice Mayor said about Diana's performance. Very, very good, very confident, a lot of trust, a lot of competency, a lot of skill, a lot of experience there. And so I thank you again, Diana. Been attending, of course, the weekly COVID conference calls. I think I did miss one. Very informative, and we're all, on both sides of the river, electeds and other folks participating in that, trying to get us to where we want to be. And we mentioned that earlier today. The SECAG had another meeting for them. They're finally, they finalized their funding round. The vast majority of the board went with the remaining, primarily a competitive process rather than a formula based on population primarily. And basically, that's how we get money. They did a PSA for, at the fire department, for a code red system, did a little video there for the fire chief promoting that system for emergency alerts. So if anybody has not done that, I highly encourage you to go on the fire department's website and sign up for that. They did a test, which I think was a successful test, at least it was for me, and I'm not technological. And I got the email, and I got a text, and something else. Three things, a phone call. All three. And so it worked really well. And we already talked about the boards and commissions interviews. That was a two-day process. And the EDC, we had a meeting with our Yuba City Economic Development Commission right here in this room, trying to see what we can do to tap their expertise and their opinions and what they can bring to the table to, as a part of the bigger picture for economic development in Yuba City. One takeaway that we had from that was we are, it was, and it was a idea of a member of the EDC, actually. And they're going to take the business license, a list of all the business licenses in Yuba City, start with the businesses that are most vulnerable, that were determined to be in the most vulnerable positions due to COVID, and just have a personal telephone call from them, or perhaps from staff. And we're going to spread the wealth a little bit, just to check in the businesses and let them know that we care, and how have they been affected, and how we might be able to help them out as a gesture. So that's one step in the right direction. Everything else has already been discussed, and we've had a, about a half-hour longer, I was kind of guessing. Tom, did you have public comment?
I'd like to ask one question.
Yes. Sure, go ahead.
I was concerned about what the speed limit was going to be on the new Bridge Street project. Has anybody thought about that?
It'll most likely be posted 35 miles per hour.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say one thing politically. If you're running for city council, you ought to at least come to the council meeting. So that's what I think.
There you go. All right. That being said, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and for those in the, online as well. Thank you.